I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands.
Fans.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Madam Clark, could you please call the roll?
Yes, of course. Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bolin.
Here.
Councilmember Milwaukie.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Present.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to start then with a public comment. You have them in the order in which they were received, Madam Clark, is that correct?
I have actually scrambled them.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I see. You've scrambled. Okay, that's great. So can you go ahead and start? And then we were at 6:02, so we'd have till 6:32. And we would ask everyone to be as succinct as possible and to avoid repetition if possible. Thank you.
Yep, and I think also City Manager Gleason is going to help us with a timer, if that might assist them as well. The first one will be Carla Bailey Smith. Carla, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
You can. You have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I am a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Bloomington-Normal. And our principles include respecting the interconnected web of existence and the inherent worth and dignity of all human beings. If you are on the record dismissing the needs of fellow humans you were elected to serve, then I'm here today talking to you. Yes, you were elected to make fiscally responsible decisions for the city of Bloomington, but for the benefit of its people who have built the emergency fund with the taxes they have paid. I was very disappointed to hear last week after the report from City Manager Gleason that not only did the majority of you vote to not even have a conversation about direct aid, but also very disappointed that some of our older persons are failing to see the humanity in this issue and in some cases focusing on their dislike of the messengers rather than hearing the message. I challenge each of you to think about who who these people are, what they're feeling, and how you can make sure their needs are being met. Yes, our governor and the state of Illinois have put many protections and assistance programs in place, but not everyone qualifies for all of these protections and assistance. People fall through the cracks and we, you, you should be ready to catch them when the community services are overburdened. I'm asking you to see the people you were elected to serve, hear the stories that are told of people in need right now, and think about the economic consequences down the line if we fail to help people right now. Too often, we don't recognize a problem until it directly affects us. So if you can't see the value in helping out someone who has lost their job or whose small business is now closed, can you see the value of putting money into their pockets, people who now have money to buy food and items of necessity, which include sales tax and money to help pay their rent to property owners in Bloomington who then will be able to pay their property tax? Think of that value, that connected web of existence. When you hear from the United Way and Path tonight, consider the people that don't fit their criteria or people who might have a more immediate need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Madam Clark.
Next up is Celia Long.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We can.
Go ahead, Celia.
Hi, my name's Cecilia Long. I've worked in social service and as a social justice advocate for over eight years. I currently serve in a number of leadership positions in the community. I'd like to first speak as an advocate for those who are housing insecure or homeless. We know the risks are high in our shelters with congregate living situations where social distancing is impossible. I've heard from other social service staff that there hasn't been testing in the shelters unless someone shows symptoms. We know this is problematic because individuals can be asymptomatic but still carry and spread the virus. In Chicago, they just started testing all their shelters and are finding that over half of their staff and residents are testing positive with no symptoms. Elected officials are now moving more quickly on a coordinated effort to start implementing housing plans by moving those homeless or unsafe-in-living situations into vacant hotel rooms. There's been word from McLean County Board that there is a plan similar for Bloomington-Normal, but it's all been kept private. Please work with the McLean County Board in making these plans transparent and public. Secondly, one of my jobs is at Heartland Community College. I work with one-on-one with non-traditional students who are faced with significant barriers that challenge their ability to be successful in school. Over the last several weeks, I've heard from countless students who have lost their jobs due to COVID-19 and are struggling to figure out how they're going to get through this. I've spent hours with them trying to utilize community resources to the most extent possible. We apply for unemployment, which has been bombarded with applications and has been having technical issues. We apply for township assistance, but there are some strict eligibility requirements. We brainstorm personal resources, but many students that I work with are non-traditional or first generation and don't have much or any family support. And we also call nonprofits for help, but there isn't any direct financial assistance available, and that's what they need most. Many also will not receive the federal stimulus check because they're claimed on their parents' taxes but aren't actually supported by their families. Going through this whole process takes time, which if you're in a crisis, like say, lost your job overnight because of a global pandemic, the situation can be dire and there isn't a whole lot of time to just wait when you have kids to feed, rent and bills to pay, and you're trying to finish school so you can get a higher-paying job. Our wonderful social service organizations who are already strained and restricted outside of a pandemic situation should not be shouldering the burden of this crisis. And frankly, it's disappointing to see some of you shift responsibility when you have the power that no one else does. We need direct financial assistance that's easy to apply for, and people need it now. As councilmembers who oversee a budget with a surplus of $22 million and make decisions with our taxpayer money, I'm asking you for municipal-level action to help people who are in crisis now. Even if you offered a small portion to start and publicized it, the need would become very transparent. I want to thank Julie Emig, Jeff Crable, Terry Renner, Jen Correa, and Scott Black for supporting direct aid. For the rest of you that haven't, I challenge you to be brave in this moment as well because the people you represent are looking to your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Madam Clark.
Is Morgan Pauli.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Morgan. My name is Morgan Pauli. I'm a student at Heartland Community College, taking classes so I can get a degree and a higher-paying job. I'm a single father and my son Mateo is two years old. I'm working with his mom so we can have shared custody and will also have court costs. He's very active and he has a pretty strict diet, so his foods cost more money. I lost my job during the COVID-19 crisis and I haven't been able to find another job yet because not many places are hiring. I've applied for SNAP and I got approved, so that's going to help with paying for food for my son and I for a little bit, but I've also applied for unemployment and it took forever to apply because the servers were down. And they're still having technical issues, even though I'm supposed to log on and apply for jobs. I can't even log on to that website, so I haven't heard anything back from them yet. I also tried calling their number, but it just beeps. I've also applied for Bloomington Township to help assist me with rent, and I had to get paperwork from my old job and my landlord, and I haven't heard anything back from them either. I did get the stimulus check, but I had to use that to pay for other bills and loans for court. I'm worried because I have rent due next week and I also have bills due soon for water, Ameren, and Nykor that I can't afford right now. Many of my friends and family are also struggling too, who work in some of the restaurants here in town. My brother works at Giordano's and they've cut all the servers, busters and dishwashers. My brother has only now been able to get hours for two days a week and they tell him the night before with very little notice if there's any work available. I live in Ward Five, so I think my councilmember is Johnny Painter. Ms. Painter, I'd like to ask you to support direct aid right now for the people struggling in the area. According to Nielsen data, Bloomington-Normal is home to the most restaurants per capita in the entire country. I am there. I'm sure there are thousands of people laid off who belong in the food industry and we could all use financial aid during this time. I'm hoping that I can stay living in the Bloomington area and continue to give my son a good living environment to get a good-paying job to support him and myself in every way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, next, please.
Next up is Dana Niswonger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dana Niswonger, pronouns she/her, and I'm a scientist. I'm a molecular biologist at ISU. I'm also a graduate student. I was claimed as a dependent by my parents, so I actually won't be able to receive any federal aid. And because of the contract that I have with the university, I am limited in what community aid that I can get. So I'm in kind of a rough spot here. My normal summer work, I've worked summer camps, which are being closed due to the virus. So I've been taking the time, all thank you to the quarantine, to continue my research, which these days involves me working to help find a vaccine for COVID-19. I dedicated my life to understanding and curing diseases, so this is what I've been working for for better part of a decade now. And I am not being paid and I'm still working to cure this thing. I don't know if I'm going to be able to pay rent or get food or even pay my internet bill that I use to access all the tools I use to do my work. Any help you could give would be fantastic. I'm not the only one in this situation. We got a couple dozen scientists over at ISU who are working on stuff like this, and a lot of us are in the same boat. We want to help you, but to do that, we need your help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clark, next.
Next up is Rachel Shively.
Rachel.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rachel Shively and I live in Bloomington. And I want to urge all of you on the council to prioritize the well-being of people in this community by setting aside a significant amount of money to offer as direct aid to people who've lost their jobs. We heard of an example of that in the testimony today due to the outbreak. And there are folks, many folks in our community who are in need of financial aid. And it's really urgent. The clock is ticking. People have rent due, people have bills to pay, groceries to buy, other types of bills to cover. More than half the people I know haven't received their federal stimulus checks yet. And more than that, there's taxpayers in this country who have been intentionally excluded from federal stimulus payments. For example, American citizens who are married to an immigrant. And we just heard that students also might not receive a check either. Even for those who have received their stimulus check, $1,200 is a minimum wage for a month, so that's not enough to live on. And now we're coming into our second month of the shutdown and bills are starting to pile up. So in addition to offering direct aid to residents, I urge you to also let us know what your plans are at the city and county level to protect unhoused and housing insecure people in this time where the health of everyone in our community, those who are housed or those who are not, need people to have a safe place to shelter during the outbreak. I lived in Bloomington now for about 11 years during this difficult time of the coronavirus outbreak. I want my community to be one in which my neighbors have a safe place to live, have running water and electricity, have food to eat, and money to pay for their other needs. Federal and state aid is important, but local government should be there to help people who fall through the cracks of that safety net. So I ask that you spend my tax dollars to keep people in this town safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark.
Next up is Louis Goslin.
Yeah, this is Louis. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so once again, I want to thank the city staff for making it possible for the community to weigh in and also thank all those who spoke ahead of me to really weigh in and show what this community is about, which is showing up for each other. I also want to express appreciation to the four councilmembers, my councilmember Scott Black, Jen Correa, Jeff Crable, Julie Emig, as well as Mayor Renner for expressing their support and committing to showing up with the values that we've heard with each person who's spoken so far. And while I'm appreciative, I've got to say that I'm very disappointed in last Monday's vote to reject the agenda item to discuss direct aid. You know, for those who are asking for more data and more details, I assume best intentions. Because while I think that, you know, discussion presents the opportunity to work out some of those details and the proposed agenda item could have created an opportunity to begin that discussion, I understand that, you know, even in this time of urgent action, folks want to make deliberate and effective decisions. And so while I'm disappointed that the motion didn't pass, I assume best intentions. But my greatest disappointment is really with the councilmembers who expressed an unwillingness to even talk about this, to even take a role in leading our community through this crisis. To say that further conversation will stir up panic feels out of touch at best. We're in the throes of a pandemic. Relief hasn't been made it to so many. And there are millions of people throughout this country, including folks in our community, who will fall through the cracks of the federal stimulus program and never see that help. Meanwhile, debt continues to pile up. People are losing their jobs every day. Phones and other services are being shut off. And the consequences of this is real and they're lasting. And for many, the panic cannot be avoided and they're looking to you for your leadership. And to say that moving the discussion to help those hit first and worst by this crisis, who are scared and hurting and looking for help, evidences the complete lack of focus of the roles and responsibilities charged on you as municipal officials begs to question who it is you show up to serve. For the data, the question of data, United Way tells us that in McLean County, there are 24,000 households that are financially unstable. This is before the COVID crisis, to my understanding. And they go on to say that as many as half of those have no existing relationships with social service agencies or government agencies to get the help that they need and that the COVID crisis is only compounding those problems. We also know that over 5,000 unemployed people were reported in March, which is up just from a few hundred in February. So we've heard it from our community. We see it in the numbers. And as was mentioned earlier, we also know that there is money available, both in the $320,000-plus from HUD as well as $22 million in surplus funds. Open it up, invite people in, and you'll learn just what you need to know in terms of the scale of this problem in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Next up is Janice Brown.
Hello, my name is Janice Brown. I live in Bloomington. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm concerned about the homeless during this crisis. They are part of this community and if they are at risk, so are we since the COVID-19 spread so easily. I'm disabled because of mental illness, so I live on SSD, SSI, i.e. I have Medicare, Medicaid, food stamps, Section 8 housing, and Medicaid. I'm completely dependent on all the resources available. I realize I'm just a step away from homelessness. If the Social Security or HUD were no more, I'd be on the street. I'm so grateful for all I have. Living across the street from the arena's parking garage, I've seen many homeless people sleeping there from time to time over the years, but not lately. Where are they? How are they? It shouldn't be that anyone should die because they have nowhere to go to be sheltered. They are not disposable people. Please look, please don't look the other way. Please use the direct aid to help these people falling through the cracks during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, next.
Next up is Sunny Garcia.
Sunny? Are you there?
He is there, but it's not allowing me to unmute him. One second. Let's move on to the next one and I'll come back and see if I can get him worked out. Robert Garcia.
Robert? Hello?
All right, let's try Matthew Sims. Matthew, can you hear us?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
We are.
Is Matthew?
Excellent. Yes, this is.
Matthew, go ahead.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today, honestly. And really thanks to everyone who's come out to show solidarity with our wonderful community. My name is Matthew Sims. I've lived throughout Bloomington and Normal for about the past 10 years or so. I only have a short amount of time, so I'd like to get right to my two points. I'd first like to address the vote that took place in our previous meeting to cease discussions on the issue of direct aid relief to our residents. I would plead with you to reconsider and to provide direct financial relief to Bloomington residents who have been harmed first and worst by this COVID-19 crisis. The fact that this has been voted against, even discussing, I think is ridiculous. Our most vulnerable demographics are getting hit the hardest during this time. And I would argue that it is morally imperative that if we have some way to help directly, that we do so immediately. The people that are being affected now, not later, it's going to only get worse. And despite any setbacks or hardships in getting the money together or who certain funds may be given to, we have to come together to find ways to help immediately. As for my second point, I would like to ask what is being done to ensure the safety and well-being of our homeless and housing insecure populations right now? Are we providing any help to the local shelters? Are we offering emergency facilities to those who were in bad position before the crisis? I would like to see some transparency on this, and if work is not currently being done, I would like discussions to occur on how our local government may provide a helping hand, side by side with those of us in these communities willing to do what we can to help reach out to those who may have nowhere else to go. They deserve testing, they deserve supplies, and they deserve to feel safe like the rest of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, the next participant.
Robert Garcia.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me or is it not working yet?
We've got you.
Okay, perfect. I'll try again. First, thank you to those four members who have the courage to lead and discuss difficult topics during the COVID crisis. My message today is focused for those five members who voted against even allowing a discussion. A couple weeks ago, I mentioned that right now you have a captive audience. You have local residents who are tuning in now more than ever. They're watching online, they're paying more attention to how our city council is responding to this crisis we're all living through. And even the media from Peoria, where we share a TV market, has been paying more attention to us, unfortunately, as a result of the rest of the council's handling. As a resident, it was very disappointing, watching the meeting last week, to see that some councilmembers refused to even entertain a discussion, let alone make a decision one way or the other. They wouldn't even allow it to be discussed. And now there are news clips of those individuals saying things like, "Well, we're not going to discuss it because that creates panic. So we're not going to discuss the crisis because if we respond to it, that creates panic." I don't even know how to respond to that. All I can say is the perception that it has created of our city is obviously not a positive one. Now whether that perception is real or not, it has created an image of our city. That we have some folks in our city council, perhaps we're out of touch with reality, that perhaps some of the council are living a comfortable lifestyle when where they themselves have not been economically affected. And perhaps they're just too far detached from the reality that so many of our folks in our communities are hurting. This idea that everything is fine, nothing has changed, and everything is normal is a false narrative. And anyone who continues to push that false narrative, well, it's not a good look. And the media is right to call out our city for this lack of response. It's embarrassing that we have TV stations putting forth these little narratives, and now we're being mocked. And you can agree or disagree with the perception, but I think we deserve to be called out as a community for our lack of response. And more so for our refusal to even allow a discussion that is not okay. I'm not suggesting that the narrative out there is correct or that it's a true reflection of our reality as a city. But it is disappointing that we would let this perception stand. We shouldn't. So with that said, I respectfully urge all members of the council to seek transparency and visibility, to allow an open conversation about providing direct aid to those in need. There is no harm in open and transparent discussion. And again, we're just asking for that, an open discussion. However you vote after the discussion, that's your vote. You represent your ward, we respect that. But to refuse any discussion altogether, that is not okay in a time of crisis. That is divisive, it is political, and it is unbecoming of the people we look to for leadership in a time of crisis. So please, have the discussion. Remain committed to transparency during this difficult time. After the discussion, let the votes fall where they may. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clark.
Next up is Zachary Gettrick.
Hello?
Yes.
Y'all hear me?
Oh, yes.
Good. My name is Zach and I live on the west side of Bloomington. I watched the meeting last week and I have to say I was shocked. I say, I say, I was shocked by some of the older people comments being made, okay? Some of y'all clamoring endlessly about your fiduciary responsibilities are the exact same older people who not five weeks ago wasted over $1 million on new vehicles. Those were not essential needs, okay? City staff even said they weren't, okay? Okay, so please spare us your incredulous diatribes about fiduciary responsibilities, okay? Because they're just falling on deaf ears, all right? So y'all sounded like some real hypocrites, like huge hypocrites. I'll say y'all reminded me of the biggest hypocrite, the icy skeleton queen Diane Benjamin. Now, I didn't think it was possible to mimic the level of hypocrisy that empty fester and bone bag has. But y'all coming close, okay? So before y'all start shodding people like y'all haven't complained to a manager in a month and y'all start casting aspersions, get yourself right, okay? Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Zachary. Next, Madam Clark.
Next up is Dane Holm.
Dane?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dane. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Thanks for taking the time to have me tonight and I'll be as concise as possible. I wish I had a more eloquent speech for you guys, but I'm going to get right to the point. I was homeless for nearly two months in Bloomington last year, and I worked myself out of that. And over the past year, have managed to get myself off the streets, put a roof over my head, and get my life back in order. I found a very good-paying job. It was union, nearly doubled what I was making. I got benefits. I was really working out great. And I took on a second job that was also very well-paid. And in the span of 48 hours, I lost both of those jobs with absolutely no warning whatsoever due to the coronavirus outbreak. I really want to drive home the point that it was not my fault. Certainly didn't quit my job. It certainly wasn't any wrongdoing on mine. I enjoyed my job. I wanted to keep going, making money. And I was also giving no warning whatsoever. And I wish I could say differently, but I'm like millions of other Americans in this country. I do not have more than a month's savings. And when I found that out, I had to use what money I had saved up on my rent, on my March rent. I was behind on April, so when our stimulus check came, I paid two months' rent and went to Walmart and it was literally gone in 24 hours. So although that helped, I'm certainly back to being housing insecure now. I don't know what I'm going to do about next month. I lost both of my jobs. I have not gotten a dime in unemployment of over a month. The unemployment system is an absolute nightmare. It's a black hole. And I have a legal right to unemployment, but they have not sent it to me yet over a month. And I don't know what I'm going to do. I literally don't. What we know for sure is that there's a national emergency that's been declared. And for the first time in our country's history, all 50 states have declared emergencies. We know that there's a very serious issue with unemployment in the economy right now. And we also know that the city has the funds to help. So to me, the question of should there be some assistance offered is really a moot point. It should be moving on to what can the city do to help the residents that have been negatively affected by this. The fact that there hasn't even been a discussion, I think, speaks very, very, very poorly for the members who voted against that. It's not, it should have already been passed a discussion at this point. We shouldn't now, a month after this outbreak has started, still be going back and forth whether we're even going to talk about helping people. So anything that could be done would be very, very greatly appreciated. I thank you for taking the time and take care.
Thank you very much. We have, well, one minute, so I think I'll use the executive prerogative to go ahead and call one more person.
All right. Yes, for that one, if we could have Joyce Key speak. Also, Mayor, just so you're aware, Sunny Garcia, I can't allow him to adjoin because he didn't use the instructions provided by email, so. Joyce Key, if you could speak. Thank you. Joyce K., if you could speak. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. I guess you can hear me. The COVID pandemic is exposing inequalities. Please read the front page of Sunday's Panograph article, "Health Versus Wealth." I thought it was very revealing. If you haven't read it, you get a hold of one and read it. Fortunately, I have privilege. I have a car, I have a house. But you know, I didn't think about others not having transportation to the fairgrounds to be tested. So the question is, how can we transport these people to the fairgrounds to be tested that don't have cars? Another question, how much assistance does normal township give in comparison to Bloomington township? I know it's more. Should it be equal? What happens to people who do not fit into the Salvation Army or time out having been at the Salvation Army? What would be the harm in looking at needs that are not met, and what can we do about them locally? I believe that the city should use available emergency funds to provide direct relief to Bloomington residents who have been harmed by the COVID-19 crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Again, we're going to move right along to our consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed for separate consideration?
Mayor Renner, we have Councilmember Correa with her hand up.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Correa.
I have a question and then possibly an action. Leslie, can you tell us how many people submitted public comment that have not had a chance to speak?
There are four right now who have not been able to speak, one of which I can't allow to speak.
Okay, so it's just three more. In that case, I want to make a motion to extend the public comment period to accommodate those three people.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor. This is Jeff.
Yeah, okay. Just in terms of the special, Jeff Jergens, is this, since this is a motion to suspend the rules, is that a two-thirds vote? Is that correct? Jeff? Jeff Jergens?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a majority vote.
It's just a majority vote. Okay, all right. Madam, so we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolan?
No.
Councilmember Milwaukway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay. So we have three more people, and they get three minutes apiece. So the motion carries. Madam Clark, would you go ahead and go to the next person, please?
Yes, John Reed.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, John. How you doing?
Well, I was going to call tonight. You've sort of been saved a little bit because of what's gone on before me because I noticed the smirk on one of your council members' face. That'd be you, Jen, because it's pretty certain you stacked the deck with callers tonight. Good job. Very, very socialist of you, but I wanted to talk about the fact that it's supposed to rain for the next three days. And I bet you know what this is about, Mr. Mayor? Since I had 30 inches of water in my basement because the storms were backed up in it this weekend, another ruined weekend, second one that I've had. Now, the sad thing is, I see Jamie there. Evidently, the city has not mapped all the sewers in town because the city employees wasted five or six hours as my basement filled with water because they couldn't find where the sewers were. Now, as much as I hate to say this, Jamie has a point. They should be mapped. I get it. Many people have put sewers in willy-nilly here and there. But if you're sitting on a $22 million emergency fund, use it to map the sewers. I've got a guy who's right across from me. He used to work for the city of Bloomington. You know what he tells me? This problem on Low Street has been happening for the past 10 years, and he says if the city says they don't know about it, they're liars because it's a known fact. City employees have told me when they've come by that they've known about it. Mr. Renner, you say you've never been told about it in the past. I've got six neighbors on either side of me that had water in their basements because of the rain we got this weekend. When I caught hold of the city, Jamie was nice enough to answer me, I had about nine inches of water. By the time hair got over there and fixed temporarily, I assume, since it's not been repaired, whatever was done, I had a full 30 inches of water in my basement. So I'm going to suggest that somebody in public works who might have an idea of what they're doing get the funds available to map the sewers because it's, it's pretty ridiculous. Now, for the five of you that didn't side with Jen and Jeff and Julie, all I had to say is bravo. You all have a nice night.
Thank you very much. Madam Clark, the next person?
The next person up is Matt Tosco.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah, with regards to last week's 5 to 4 council decision to not put discussion of local direct aid per the COVID-19 crisis on this week's agenda, I'd first like to address the nays from wards one, two, and three. Voting no for the laughable reason of vagueness and time wasting is either lazy or a deliberate attempt to circumvent transparent accountability, or both. I want the process of putting together the nuts and bolts in full public view so I can see what compromises are made and who is making them. Also, I feel government should do everything in its power to make charity unnecessary. Sitting back to see what nonprofits accomplish and then potentially filling in the cracks is the exact opposite of what you're elected to do. Excuse me. Now, word five's nay. The older woman's excuse of not adding to, creating panic, is one of the weakest dodges I've ever heard. If during a crisis you put that kind of vacuous theater above helping people in need, it only highlights your complete lack of leadership, naked disdain for those less well-off, and how dumb you must think people are. If nothing else, it displays an alarming lack of seriousness and insight for these difficult times. Moving on to word nine, that nay came from Alderwoman Bray, whose only real purpose on the council seems to be obstructing anything that would benefit anyone outside of whatever insulated, out-of-touch interest she's really beholden to. Not our responsibility to even publicly discuss what direct aid would look like and how it could work? I really didn't expect anything better from her. To close, I'd like to point out that historically, when governments fail their people in times of crisis, it has only led to greater difficulties for those governments and the capitalist interests they tend to circle their wagons around when the going gets rough. Already nationwide and locally, there are whispers of strikes, general strikes, rent strikes, and the rebirth of unemployed councils when all of that could be avoided if said governments were responsive to the real needs of their people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I think last commentator then, Madam Clark?
Is Grace Goldwick.
Grace?
Hello, members of the council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, great.
All right. I'd like to first start by thanking you all for extending the section of public comment. I'd first like to ask you guys to think about their children, nieces, or nephews, or maybe personally, what you guys have lost from this COVID-19 situation. You may have not been able to go to graduations, celebrate birthday parties. You may have new onset of anxiety or other feelings that you may not be used to. For me personally, I come from a very privileged place. I haven't been able to attend this trans-cultural nursing experience that I've been looking forward to for almost a year that I had won a nearly $1,000 scholarship to pursue. However, I want you to take those feelings of regret and sadness and amplify those. Imagine that you are somebody who wasn't able to pay for rent. You didn't know how to get formula for your child, who within a few days would be starving. I want you to take those feelings of uncomfort that we have already experienced during this pandemic and amplify those to some of the members of our community who have been experiencing those 1,000 times. I want you to put yourself in the position of being able to go to the store and not afford anything that you see because your stimulus check has already run out. I want you to think, if it was your son or daughter or your niece or nephew, would you want them to have everything possible to succeed during this pandemic? Or would you want them out on the streets starving? We all know that during times of crisis, people look to their leaders. And right now, as people are looking to you, all that they're seeing is rejection. They're seeing that you do not want to open up a conversation to applying aid to people who need it most. You have to ask yourself, if this was somebody that I loved who was in this position, if this was my son, daughter, husband, wife, niece, or nephew, would I want them to have the financial means necessary to dig themselves out of this hole, or would I want them to continue to suffer? I'm an extremely proud member of this community. I've lived here my entire life. I go to school at ISU as a nursing student, and I care incredibly deeply about all the members of this community. And personally, I believe that it would be a gross miscarriage of justice for you to continue to ignore the blatant issue that is in front of you right now when you have the surplus of money and the surplus of work to be able to accomplish a great deal of positive change. I hope that you reflect on what I've spoken to today and what other people have spoken about and their own personal experiences as you move forward with this decision. Again, I'd like to thank you all for listening to me speak today, and I hope you have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And a public comment that is concluded. Is that correct, Madam Clark?
Yes, Mayor. We do have two others, Alan Axelrod and Joe Kennedy, that joined us quite far into the meeting. So I think it'd be your call as to whether you'd like to let them speak. They are live on. Other than that.
They didn't.
They just recently joined, and the rules say 6:00 P.M.
Okay, all right. Unless there's a motion in that to suspend the rules, I'm going to go ahead and have us move forward.
Thank you. If I could just read the list of people who emailed public comment now?
Please.
Thank you. Jan Lancaster, Creighton Satterwhite, Joyce K., and Don Dinnerbrink.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, we move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of the council would like to have considered separately? I don't see any, therefore, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Councilmember Bolan, seconded by Councilmember Crable. Any further discussion or any discussion? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Milwaukway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Right. Next, we move to our regular agenda, and under item 7A, we have related to some of the, of course, public comment presentation on McLean County Recovery Loans and COVID-19 Community Resources. And we have a presentation by Patrick Hoben, and we have a presentation also by Camille Rodriguez. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to, first to our city manager, and Mr. Gleason, you want to go ahead and make the introductions?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Tonight, we have the privilege of having three presentations to discuss some of the COVID-19 type of recovery programs that are available in the community. All three groups have agreed to make presentations, again, as our guests. And the first one is the McLean County Recovery Loans that have been placed for a long time. County Board just took action a couple of weeks ago. We've got the county administrator, Camille Rodriguez, and the EDC Executive Director, Patrick Hoben. Patrick and Camille?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason and, and Mayor. Thank you, and thank you to the entire council. It's, it's an honor to join you this evening. And Patrick and I have been working together for a while. He's really been rolling up his sleeves on this program, but, but a quick synopsis, as City Manager Gleason mentioned, the McLean County Board has had a longstanding targeted loan development program, and in light of the situation related to COVID-19, had some great conversation about what we could do with some of those funds to address needs of small businesses in the community. That's where I give Patrick and his staff all of the credit because Patrick came to a few of our meetings, the Finance Committee and Executive Committee meetings, to name a few, and brought forth some recommendations, and after a lot of conversation, provided the McLean County Board with some possible solutions. And so I turn that over now to Patrick. I know he has a presentation for you to explain, but it's, again, my honor. Thank you so much for having us, and Patrick, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Camille. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen now and get this going. Hopefully, everybody can see this.
It's good.
All right, great. Love it when technology works. So as Camille said, and also thanks to him and Mayor for having us tonight to talk about this, discuss the hero's journey, which you guys have all talked about, having a challenge where your struggle was, and then a resolution that we ended up coming to. The challenge itself is that there's a large impact, which we all know, on nonessential businesses. And there is also a EDC and a County Micro Loan Fund that had been in place for a while, but it's, has a history of being difficult to navigate. There are programs available, but the programs are, you know, going pretty fast. I know that there's been an injection of money that's came through, and that's not expected to last very long. So our role with the county is to try to be a last resort with these funds to other traditional financing mechanisms and the state and the federal. So what we did was we took a look at the McLean County Small Business Micro Lending Program, which was also a part of the targeted program, and the county had set aside about $600,000. We work with the county. We called as many banks as we could, credit unions as we could, just to try to make sure that we are working with them ahead of time in order to create these rules and create a tool that they could use along with their clients. So we shifted the funds from being funds for startups in order to take care of our own businesses. We ended up creating two funds to start with, and these funds are flexible, meaning that if one program ends up being more popular than the other, then we would end up shifting. The two programs that we came up with was a micro county bridge load program and then also a recovery loan program. The micro loan program is a $5,000 loan program. These are not grants. It's a loan that is really there in order to get somebody to a longer-term program that would be available. The 20%, $20,000 program is a gap loan program. This would be a traditional mechanism to where if you went to your bank and you're looking for $100,000, we had hoped that the bank could cover 80, and then that our loan program would cover the other 20, up to $20,000. The interest rates, we duplicated what the Paycheck Protection Program had at 1%. Term-wise, it says shifted over to two years and then to the life of where the bank loan was. We waived the closing fee, no application fee. We still do require collateral because it isn't low. Business plan is no longer required because it's not for startups. And one of the big things, though, was knocking the time down before the process took 60 days because it went from the SBDC to the EDC to the CDC, to County Finance, to County Board for Approval. Now we're going straight from the EDC to the CDC for approval, so that should really speed up the process. Also, another hangup was the confidentiality factor, that whenever it went to County Finance and to County Board for Final Approval, all of the entire loan package was a public document. Now that is all going to be housed at the EDC, which elected officials can still come in and see, but we will not turn it over to be foible. So it'll be similar to what we do with Rivian and Brant, so where the files are at the EDC to view, but they're not public documents. We also got rid of the projection side of things to try to speed it up, so really just asking for three years of historical data. So really just asking for three years of historical data when it comes to cash flow, balance sheets, still need a financial statement, and federal tax returns. Then also schedule debt. It's whatever a bank would require. Same with collateral, and then the documents too. As we said, business plans are no longer required because it's not really for startups. And the other side of it was, we actually changed this language. I forgot to update the slide. We're trying to target businesses that are non-residential businesses, so not something that's a part of the gig economy. So not really for Uber drivers, but more for people that have employees or in a commercial business, and it's across the board. This isn't just for a manufacturer. This is for the flower shop too. So we're trying to really divide up the funds, get it out as many people as possible, and prioritize it down to the smaller one for 10 employees or less, and then a larger one for 50 employees or less. But the goal of this is to really help out our small businesses. And again, it is a loan program. We're going to continue working with the banks to push this out. Right before this meeting, we got the applications approved and uploaded on our website. So if you went to BNBiz.org and went underneath Resources, you'll find both applications are available. We've had a lot of phone calls about that, but we're really excited to roll these out and start assisting our businesses. And with that, I will take questions.
Questions of Patrick. Madam Clerk, can you help me? Here, I'm not seeing anybody.
We have, let's see, Councilmember Bray, Crable, Milambway, and I'll give you three more after that.
I'm going to go ahead and start with Old Woman Bray, and then you said Boland and Crable?
We had Crable and Milambway.
Crable and Milambway. Okay, let's go with those three.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, thank you so much for this presentation and for this work that you're doing for our community and working with our businesses, and of course, those important jobs that they provide. The one slide you showed talked about showing three years of financials. Can you put that slide back up or at least talk us through that a little bit? Because my question is this, what if there is a new business with less than three years of experience? Can you walk us through what your program might look like for that new business?
Yes, that was one where we also made adjustments. I think the goal of the county was to make this as flexible as possible. So yeah, historically, the things that are in 2018 is the current program, which we actually just changed. So what we changed this to, it's actually three years historic if they've been in business for three years. If it's been less, then it's less. All we're asking for is as much historical data as possible.
Oh, well, thank you for that. That was, thank you so much. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks. And did we say, oh, was it Old Woman Crable next?
Crable, yep.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. This is for, oh, great, this is for Mrs. Rodriguez. So the money for this micro loan program, it's outside of the county's budget. Is that accurate?
Well, the best way for me to answer that is the treasurer tracks the funds that are allocated for this program. I don't know if I would ever call it outside of our budget because we don't have dollars outside of the approved budget document from the McLean County Board. So the money is tracked, and we know exactly how much is allocated to the EDC for these particular loan programs.
Okay. And it's my understanding from, and maybe this is a question that Patrick can answer, that I listened to the, I think, the executive board meeting, board meeting, and a lot of council member or board members are talking about getting the money into the community as quickly as possible. Is that fairly accurate of what you heard?
Yes, that's why we tried to knock the time down from 60 days to 20 days. That was approved last Tuesday. We uploaded, or not uploaded, made all the changes according to the recommendations from board, got it approved by the CDC, got it approved by legal, and launched today.
Great. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
As fast as I could work.
Right, thank you. Thanks, Patrick.
Sounds good. Councilmember.
Okay, just a simple question. I wanted to know, on one of the slides, you had closing costs for, if you can go back to that. Yeah, so closing fee of 10%. Okay, and does that mean that it applies to the bank as well?
Now, there's no, well, yeah, the closing costs on that, this is only for our loans. We can't, you know, control what the banks do with this. The one in 2018 did have a 10% fee. For the new ones, we're not charging any fee for closing costs.
Okay, okay, so, but the banks could technically.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And anybody else? So have any hands up, other hands?
Yeah, next up would be Mathie, then Boland, then Correo, and there's a couple others.
Mathie, Boland, Correo, and then we'll go from there.
Patrick, thank you for this presentation, and you as well, Camille. We, I was just curious, is this presentation and the application also going to be available at the BN Prepared website? Or linked off there?
Yes, we're going to update all of our guides because also State Farm's funding program that went to Lisk, that's new as well, and I swear there was another one that just launched. But we're trying to update the guides and BN Prepared, but I literally just threw it on the website before I jumped on here, but we will update everything.
Okay, good. I've just been trying to make sure that everybody in our business community is referencing one website to go to for all the programs and everything we have there. So I just don't want to confuse things by sending people to multiple places.
Yes. BN Prepared. Multiple times. That's the go-to.
Okay, that's all. That's all the question I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes, I have a really quick question. I read that some of the local banks are offering loans with 0% interest. Are you familiar with that, or can you share anything?
If they have 0% interest, I know the PPP is a 1% interest loan. I don't know if they have 0%.
Okay.
And the other thing about the PPP, which we kept trying to push everybody to, is that if you use 75% of that on your workforce, then it becomes forgivable. So that's the best deal in town.
Sure, okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
And then, Madam Clerk, who's next?
It'd be Correo, Black, and then Emig.
Okay, Correo, Black, and Emig.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you both for your work. Really appreciate this presentation. I'm curious if you could clarify for me and for the folks who might be watching us from home what the process is for applying, just a summary of what that process looks like and what applications look like when they'll be made available, all of that good.
Let's switch over again if I can. So yes, these applications are online right now. This is the packet for the micro bridge side. There's a checklist on here just to make sure that everybody qualifies. There's the application itself, and it's pretty short, as you will see, and that's it, three pages. So fill this out as soon as possible, email it to me, and we'll run it through the EDC and the CDC.
So that's the application process. Folks run into problems with that application. I noticed that there was the number at the bottom. Is that where we should direct them?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Black and then Emig.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Patrick and Camille, for coming on tonight. I'm going to ask this question to everybody, so you guys can be prepared for it. But a lot of the concerns that we heard tonight during public comment are very similar to the ones we've been hearing over the last few months. So, and this may not be applicable to Patrick, so it's not, no problem. But can you share the things that you've seen through your office that are similar to what we've heard this evening and some things that we've heard that are not congruent with what we've heard this evening?
So a lot of that we're hearing is from the business side of things. And traditionally, the EDC has not focused on smaller businesses. We are adjusting right now to do that because that's who's getting impacted the most. It's also the reason that we put together, we started off with just a recovery guide for businesses, and then immediately got an email that said, hey, what about the people? So we turned around and created one for the residents as well, and we're trying to update that with programs. I think the hardest part right now is just tracking the resources. So it's great that you guys have the United Way on here. Anyone else that could come on to talk about what programs are there, because there's a lot, but it's just hard to track everything. So I think that the resources are there, but it's just a matter of, like, for us, the role of our job, the role of this program is to fill in the gaps that are left from all the other resources. So we don't want to be in competition, especially with our financial institutions. We want to be their partner. So our role is to come in and catch everybody in the end.
Cool, thank you. And so, and I'll also ask this to everybody else as well. How can the city help make this program be successful?
I think you're doing it right now. I mean, just letting us talk about it. And then anyone that has questions for this out there, send everyone you know to BNPrepared.org. That's where we partner with the Chamber and the CBB to track as much as possible. And if you guys know of programs that aren't on there, let us know so we can get it updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Emig.
There we go. Yes, thank you very much, Patrick and Camille, for this presentation. In a way, you answered the question I was going to ask, but just to make it really clear, I applied for a triple P loan as the director of a local nonprofit and was very fortunate to get in underneath the first closure. And I know that you can't provide any forgiveness to your loan. If you could just articulate why, because I have a feeling it's just because of the structure of what you're able to fund. And my understanding is that there is going to be another influx of loans available for businesses that did not get the PPP funding in the first round.
Right.
And my assumption is that you're still encouraging businesses to seek those resources as well. Thank you.
There, it's not, it's not, it's not a must-have now, but yes, the PPP, I think, at 9:30 today, launched again. So hopefully, as many Bloomington Normal businesses as possible were already in the pipeline. We did not make ours forgivable or a grant, just that was that direction of county board that we wanted to make sure that is a loan, but we still put it at 1%. And also, I didn't mention that the payments are deferred until January. So by pushing that back, we're hoping that that's going to help some people really, really bridge this gap and help as many as possible.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
There are no hands raised right now, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Camille. We really appreciate all you're doing. And thank you for the information, and we will continue to try to get the word out about this to help and reinvigorate our economy in this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we move to item 7B, and this is also a presentation, no counsel action required. This is PATH and COVID-19. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, who's going to turn it over to Karen Zangler.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yet another presentation. This is the night for presentations. We knew that this was coming, where we wanted to share the programs that exist and then talk through some of those, look at the flexibility that these programs have to try to successfully adjust as a need might come down the road. And PATH is a longtime player in the community and very much appreciate Karen's willingness to come and talk about her program. Karen?
Well, thank you for inviting me. I know that when I talked to the McLean County Executive Council about homelessness, I didn't realize they put it on YouTube, nor did I realize how many people.
Sorry, she's really hard to hear. Can we?
Karen, Karen, could you maybe speak up just a little bit? We're not sure what, it's a little hard to hear you. Hello? Madam Clerk, am I missing something?
She's muted right now.
Okay, now, now can you hear me?
A little better. If you could maybe speak up just a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, wow!
All right, well, I was asked for the McLean County Executive Session, talking to them a little bit about the homeless, and that is what preceded, I think, my invitation to speak here tonight. I would tell you that at this time, we have two shelters, Home Sweet Home and Salvation Army. And at both, we're at, well, at Salvation Army, we're about 78% capacity and about 85% capacity over at Home Sweet Home Ministries. At any given time in this county, we have approximately 200 people who are homeless. That means all the people who are in shelters, including DV shelters, and people who are living on the street. We have, the COVID-19 has forced everyone to look at what we are doing to protect everyone. And within both of the shelters, they are playing, or not playing, but they are using the shelter-in-place type of way of reacting to this. Once somebody appears to have symptoms, they're taken to be tested, and then they have to go into quarantine, and PATH is the one who places them into a hotel and keep them for at least a minimum of two weeks with $25 a day for food and case manager constantly checking on them as things progress. Right now, we have 18 people in hotels, and I expect that we're going to have another one tomorrow. So I wanted to make sure people knew that there were options out there. The money that we're using for these hotels is the same money that Chicago got to move their homeless into old hotels. But it's only about probably an eighth of what the Chicago area got from HUD. But we're grateful for it, and it certainly gives us a great place to put people who have no homes, who have no resources, or who may have COVID. Questions on that?
Questions of Karen. Comments?
Let me say a couple more things. We do have 10 to 12 people on the street living right now. And those numbers actually go up in the summertime and go down in the wintertime. However, the people who are on the streets, they're on the streets because because their actions or their illnesses keep them from living in a shelter environment. So for instance, three of the people on the streets right now are pedophiles, and they cannot stay at either shelter. We have several of them who have violence at the part of their bathroom where they've been violent within a shelter setting. And then we have people with severe mental illness and substance abuse disorders. PATH is the one who keeps trying to work with the people on the street, making sure their needs are met. When we had a very cold night in January, it was our staff that was going around trying to find everybody and asking them in order to put them into a hotel. Most of them refused, but at least we did our best to make sure that they were covered. So the thing that we are probably, is going to be difficult, is that I anticipate these need for shelter to increase over time. This second month of staying inside is creating a lot of phone calls. Because I'm here, I'm talking about PATH. I'm not playing another role. But for instance, in our statistics, if you look at our housing calls from February and to the second week of March, we had a 112% increase. I'm glad to hear that Davis is here tonight to talk about the food program because from February to March, we had a 441% increase in food requests. 441% in food. You could tell at the beginning of the crisis that people really had a lot of questions because our calls went up on all the things about COVID. Was it, we were trying to keep up with all of it, working with the Health Department, Department of Public Health. Those calls now, they are fading, but now people are calling for their real needs. And that would be rent and mortgage payment assistance. So I don't, I don't know that our system is strong enough to withstand a great deal of people not having housing. But I would remind people at this point in time, there are no evictions going on. And there's been no indicators that they're really going to stop that process. So people are. So people are renting, people are, have their mortgages and are not paying them, but there's not going to be any consequence. The other thing I want everyone to know, because you'll know it if you read the panograph on a daily basis. These packages of assistance from the federal government are coming down to the communities. And it's going to take a little bit to find out how we're going to utilize those to help people in Bloomington, in Normal, in the Plain County. So we have that hope ahead of us. They passed the 2.1 trillion dollar budget and those funds are just starting to come down on a community level. And so we had a lot of calls for housing, but now it's settling off because we told them, hang on, wait, we're going to have something, you're not going to be evicted. And then we're making referrals to other programs. Questions?
Questions of Karen?
We have Councilmember Matthew and Councilmember Correa.
Jamie, go ahead. Go first. And then Jen.
Karen, thank you very much for joining us tonight, first of all. My first question is regarding the shelters. Is there a way where instead of waiting for people to show symptoms of possibly having COVID-19, we can get them out to the fairgrounds and get the staff out there and be more proactive and check everybody up front? Where, I keep seeing in the reported that the, the, the fairground testing is not being used at, at maximum capacity right now. So that maybe there's something else we can do to get some folks out there and get tested and make sure we know who's sick and who's not right now?
I think that we would have to, right now, the people who are getting tested at the fairgrounds, either have to be a health worker or they have to have active symptoms. So taking all people without symptoms is not something that I think would be allowed. But I would, I would probably talk with the Health Department and the Department of Public Health to see if they would be willing to do testing, even on those individuals who show no signs.
Okay, so we can, we can work that route. Thank you for that. My, my second question for you is, you know, regarding housing and food, you said there was over a 400% increase. Could you give us an idea in terms of real numbers, what that looks like? Is that 100 to 400 or 1,000 to 4,000? Or what does that look like, Doc?
Hold on a second. I have a lot of numbers here. Let me, give me just a moment. Okay. In February, we had 113 calls for food. In March, we had 611. And we actually gave out almost 2,000 referrals to those individuals. We do have a system where we can email the whole list of everything that's available. And, you know, there have been things coming up. It's, it's a part, a wonderful part of being in this community is to see the organizations come together and try new things and do new things. And I'm not going to tread on Dave's feet because he's got a whole thing going with food. But it is, it is, I think, gotten better because if I take a look at today's food requests, oh, it's still pretty high, 444.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that. That, that helps shine some clarity in terms of what the scope is and who's, you know, who's calling you, reaching out, looking for help. So thank you.
Thank you. Jen? Correa?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So the first one is, I, I understand you, you shared about different behaviors or previous conditions that might keep people from being able to be housed in shelters. Is it also the case that people with children that are different genders are staying in a shelter? I, I believe, I, I know from, from somebody who is homeless that if they have, they have like a nine-year-old or maybe it was 11-year-old, I guess at this point be 11-year-old son. She's a woman, and so what she had shared is that she has difficulty staying at the shelters because they don't allow them to stay together. Is that, is that the case for most of our, our shelters in town? I'm sorry, I, we can't hear you.
Okay. So first of all, can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Salvation Army does not. It's all single.
Say that one more time. We lost you for a second.
Karen, could you repeat that last point?
She has herself muted, actually.
Karen, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay. Yeah. Can you repeat that last point?
Last point was that Salvation Army does not take children. Home Sweet Home does take children. Because of how their, their building is set up, they have the men's side and the women's side. If the child is a, let, let me just say, we got a father and a 13-year-old daughter. They can't stay there necessarily because she's got to go to the women's side and he's got to go to the men's side. But she's not really able to watch out for herself. However, I want to be sure that everyone knows that they have family rooms available where the entire family can stay. But of course, the availability of bed space or these family rooms is always pretty much at maximum. So we are not meeting all of the needs of people with children when it comes to housing them in an emergency.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. The other thing that I was going to ask about is PATH is the entry point for a lot of our social services. So we are constantly being told to refer folks through PATH. I did some quick math in terms of like my own rent. Electric, internet, phone, water and trash, car insurance, gas, all that good stuff. And if I had, if I had lost my income, starting when shelter in place took down, I would be $3,325 in debt by the end that the order is presumably going to be lifted at the end of May. So if I called PATH and I said, I, I just need money to pay my rent, to pay my electric bill, to pay my internet, where would you refer me and what is the possibility of actually getting cash assistance for those things?
Okay, so we have, we have existing pockets of money through township, through community action, and through Salvation Army. The federal government is sending funds to expand the capacity to help, even with utility assistance. If you call to me today about your utility bill, I would send you to Community Action. They have money for the LIHEET program in. But until such time, as it's figured out, what money is coming into this community, we're unsure. But I can just tell you that from 35 years in this community and doing social services, I have never met a time where the community did not pull together in order to solve the problem. And certainly, City of Bloomington has been there over those 35 years. And in fact, one project that they did with us, the Compassion Center, never would have happened without, and that was for the homeless who, who did not have a place to stay once they were released from the, at seven o'clock in the old shelter at Salvation Army.
True. So I guess I, what I, what I want to know in your expert opinion, and we've already heard from our township supervisor about the limitations for emergency township assistance and general assistance. So I'm curious if you could focus on the other two, Community Action and Salvation Army. If you've got people like myself who would be, you know, $2,000 or $3,000 in debt at the end of this, how many of those people do you estimate that there is currently funding to, to support?
I don't have the answer to that because I don't know how much we're getting coming down. But with the ones that we have, we know that normal township will pay up to $900 if you need to assist. They don't start at the beginning. They won't pay for a new place by first month rent or first month deposit. But they give a significant amount that would probably take probably a lot. A lot of the people we serve are looking at apartments in the 500, the 600 dollar range.
But you'd have to be a normal resident, right? So, and, and again, we, we've heard about the township. So I'm, I'm specifically asking about the Community Action and the Salvation Army and what resources are available now.
Okay. So the resources that they have available now, they go by, by poverty level. So person has to be at poverty level, 100% of poverty level, 75% of poverty level. Those guidelines are established by the federal government. And so they would give as much of that as, as a person might qualify for. We are hoping that with the federal money coming in, we're going to be able to take that up to 200 to 250% of poverty level in order to better serve what is going to be a couple of months without, without paying tax. We know it's going to be a lot of money.
So is it, in, in your expert opinion, do you believe that with the money that's going to be coming from the state and the federal level that you will be able to meet the needs of every Bloomington resident that is?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Okay, got it. So it's even with the money that you're expecting to come?
Someone says money. I, I think this is huge. This is, this is never intended before. And, yeah, I, no, I, I expect that there will be people to fall for cracks.
Thank you. My last question is about the time that it takes to get somebody who is currently houseless to move into housing. So my understanding is that there is a waiting list to be housed and, and not necessarily openings for everybody. So what is the, the wait time for somebody who is houseless to, to be housed within this system? Sorry, my cat is very interested in this conversation.
That is a complicated question because it depends what kind of house. If people are looking for Section 8 vouchers to help them with their rent to pay their landlord, they have a three-year waitlist for, for Section 8 vouchers. If you are a family of kids who, who need subsidized housing within the Bloomingtons of Housing Authority, it was still looking at probably months of wait. So I don't know how much we'll be able to speed things up in this situation that we've never faced before. But I know it is one of our, our bright lights out there. How fast can we get people back into homes?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions of Ms. Zangrill?
We have, we have Crable, Black and Boland.
Crable, Black and Boland. Okay.
And also Malamway at the end. Yes.
Oh, wow. Okay, okay. Crable, Black, Boland.
And Malamway.
Okay, go ahead. Jen?
Karen, I just want to point out, I mean, just to thank you and for all of what PATH has done. You, you've been doing this, I think you said, for, for 35 years. Is that right?
That's right.
So have, have you ever seen something like this, a crisis like this with COVID-19?
No, I never thought to live through a pandemic. We did planning for planning pandemics. In fact, we, we changed things so that we would be ready for a pandemic or for a tornado coming through. But no, I, I never have seen anything like this and I wish I retired five years ago.
So, so let me follow up on a couple of other questions that, that council members asked. Do you, I, I guess you talked about a moratorium on rent. Would your goal as a social service provider be that people don't get into a situation where, you know, they're owing two or three months' rent when the moratorium ends, but yet have been able to obtain funding to pay some, at least some rent during that moratorium period?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. Could you put it differently?
I'm sorry, Karen. What I'm asking is with regard to people that need housing assistance, right? And should there be aid provided to them before the point where they get an eviction notice and they're three, two to three months behind in rent?
I think that, I think that I can't answer that.
Okay. Okay. And then just one other question with, with data. Is there really anything you can rely on to, to definitively say what the need may be in the next two to three months? Or do you just have to base it a lot on your experience and, and what you're seeing now as to what the future need may be?
Yes, it is. I wish I had a crystal ball or some figures that would get guided us. We have a very sophisticated health communication center now. And we have, we have opportunities to remotely provide services. There are, I can, I can guarantee you on our numbers of calls, it's not counted by a person, but counted by machines. I can tell you what zip code these people live in and locations. But that's all information of what has passed. I don't have anything to predict.
Thank you, Karen, so much.
Okay. Since we have three council members who still want to speak and we're well over our 15-minute council discussion budget, is there a motion to extend this for another 10 minutes?
No.
I got several. Moved by Councilmember Crable and second by? Okay, I see a handle.
Crable didn't do it. Somebody else did.
Crable didn't do it? Oh. Who made the motion?
Well, I, I'll just take credit for the motion.
Okay, you'll take credit for the motion, second by Black. And Madam Quirk, would you call the roll to extend the conversation for another 10 minutes?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Malamway?
Yes.
Councilmember Eme?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We've got another 10 minutes until 7:38. And I'm going to go to Alman Black, then Boland and Malamway.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen, for, for sticking around for, I think I saw you on the township and then also through our public comment and now. Appreciate that. You there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
A little. A little bit better now, yeah.
Okay. I am literally screaming.
It's the passion. I am, thank you.
So, questions?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes. I, I just want to make sure that you, you're on the line there. And so I, I'm going to ask everybody the same three questions. So during public comment, you know, we heard a lot of the same concerns we've heard over the last few weeks. Can you share from your perspective, the things that you heard that are similar to what your office is experiencing? And things that were shared that were dissimilar to what your office is hearing?
Again, that's a, that's a tough question. Are we talking about the people? Are we talking about the people who were making commentaries earlier?
Yeah, during public, very much in alignment with, with what we've been hearing over the last probably six weeks or so. So things like homeless shelters being overrun, you know, that, that social services on the verge of collapse, those sorts of things.
I, I very much appreciate the passion and energy that we have residents bring to the city council. I think that we are in a position right now that I would only describe as a holding pattern. And we do not have any particularly single greatest needs sticking out here. We are, we, there are funds from other programs, so we are taking those people that we can help. The, you know, township is still giving out money and Community Action, Salvation Army. So we're not in a, we're not on overload yet, but we are on shaky ground.
Thank you. And then my, my last question will be, how can the city help your office?
I think that will depend greatly upon how the community decides to come together to figure out the, the problems of the residents. So I think that answers in the future.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight, Karen, and the great work your office is doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boland and then Malamway.
Yes, I just have some follow-up questions. You said 400% increase in calls are, do those include questions for mental or emotional health? Or is it specifically for rent? Or is it specifically for rent and food?
I am so glad that you asked me that question. Because for February into March, really, our calls on mental illness, uh, being depressed were, were pretty much the same. But in April, our numbers have almost tripled in terms of people being depressed, anxious. We still don't have a lot of suicide calls going. But the mental aspect of all of this time with doing without, I'm sure, sure about our future, uh, we're starting to see that on the lines now.
Yeah, I kind of expected that.
Yeah.
Um, and the, uh, the other question follow-up is, uh, I think it was Alderman Correa asked the question about how many people are calling, uh, or how many people? Or would you be able to help everybody in the community? Are you talking about eighty thousand people or are you talking about, um, people that, go ahead.
What I would hope, I, there's no way we're going to meet every need, I don't believe. But I hope that we meet the needs for the people who are in greatest need. That those individuals who may not be working and they're only returning to a job that's minimum wage.
Okay.
So that, that, but that will definitely be, uh, something that we look at.
Okay, the, the last question would be, would you be considering people that would come to you for a mortgage payment or support?
We would refer first to programs that are already existing when you would get behind in your mortgage. So we would, we would send them in that direction to see what they could do and working with their bank and foreclosure. So, you know, it wouldn't be an open check to somebody who needs to make a mortgage payment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman, Malamway?
Okay, Karen, thank you so much, uh, for coming by and, and sharing this information. It was very informative. Uh, my question is, um, what can you, are you talking with other groups to try to understand what the unmet needs are? Um, and are you even yourself, um, getting questions from folks where, um, you realize that you're not able to meet the need that they have?
We always talk together. There is a, uh, there is a spirit of cooperation, I believe, through the social service agency. And I am not ready to comment on what might come because we wanna be sure of where we're at. But I can assure you that we are talking, and if you look at our history of so many years, we have always come together and we have always generated some type of movement.
So do you think that at some point you'll be able to generate a list of what, what needs are not met?
Yes, we do that every time we take a phone call. So if we were not able to provide, uh, let's say, a referral for rent, it's marked as an unmet need, and then there's a reason selected for it. They made too much money, uh, they didn't make enough money. Uh, our unmet needs are gathered quarterly and are shared with funders and with, um, we don't share, I should send the mayor our quarterly unmet needs. Um, because those unmet needs are probably the most important part of what we do. Because we can spot where we're going, where we're seeing some change, where things are getting worse.
Well, thank you, I, I'd appreciate that list, thank you.
I will be happy to send it to you.
Awesome, great. Uh, I don't see any other hands up?
There is one, uh, Mayor, uh, Julie Emig.
Oh, yes.
House Member Emig.
Yep, thank you, I'll be quick. Um, and thank you, Alderwoman Boland, for asking about mental health. I was gonna ask that as well. And, um, thank you so much, Karen, for providing us with this information. And the, the quarterly report of unmet needs will be really helpful. I, I, I'm gonna circle back to something I think that, um, Alderman Crable was trying to ask, which is, you know, you don't have a crystal ball, obviously. Um, but given that the moratorium on evictions will end at some point, um, are, do you foresee that you might have a spike in unmet need in terms of housing instability?
Yeah, that will, that will definitely, um, come, come onto our statistics. And, um, it is something that, you know, we, we have spoken, uh, through email by, um, that we're gonna have to watch really carefully so that we can see that those in most trouble of getting the eviction when the eviction order is lifted, that we get those people how? Or get their rent caught up?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we have, uh, run out of time. And Karen, once again, thank you for everything, not just for this evening, but for your thirty-five years of work in our community, helping the least fortunate and to help educate us on people who were falling through the cracks and what needs are still out there. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Mayor, we, um, sorry to interrupt, um, Councilmember Correa does have her hand up.
Oh, okay, Jen, we're out of time, but you go ahead, uh, very quick.
Super quick, my question is, um, in those reports, those quarterly reports around the unmet need, um, does it track, uh, like failed referrals? So essentially, if somebody calls and isn't able to be referred somewhere, um, does it track that?
Uh, we have actually, another part of the software is follow-up. Every caller to pass, at the end of the call, is asked if they want a follow-up call. And we follow up with you to see if this worked out. And we can take down all their information. We can say, do you want us to call at midnight or three AM or twelve in the morning or at noon? Uh, and we can even say, do you want us to leave a message on the answering machine or no? Um, provided a good environment. So we can go back and find out exactly what happened. Maybe that didn't turn out to be the right referral we made, and so we need to take a look at that. But we will, if it, if it didn't, it will eventually end up on the, oh, goodness, I'm tired. On the unmet needs.
I, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is that if, uh, if I call and you tell me, you made too much money, you're not gonna qualify for any of these services, and I don't request a follow-up, do I get tracked somewhere in your system?
No, not as it exists now.
Got it, thank you so much.
Good suggestion.
Great, thanks again, Karen.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. We're moving right along to item C, and that's now the United Way. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, who's gonna turn it over to, uh, Pawnee and Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, United Way, uh, we've got, uh, the Board Chairman Pawnee, uh, and also the Executive Director, uh, David. They're gonna provide a, a presentation. I actually serve on the board. Uh, this was an entity that, uh, David and Pawnee stood up very quickly, uh, you know, some of the resources. And I think it's been mentioned tonight, it's definitely been mentioned, uh, in past conversations. Nobody's got a crystal ball. Uh, but this is, uh, a group like the others that we've heard previously, uh, that know that they need to be flexible and know that there's gonna be different phases of, uh, recovery. I mean, we're still in the initial stage, uh, of this pandemic, so we're not even talking recovery, uh, yet. Uh, but to that point, uh, very much appreciate, uh, United Way accepting, uh, our ask for them to be a guest presenter. Pawnee and David?
Well, thank you to, uh, um, City Manager Gleason, uh, Mayor Renner, and the City Council for having us here with you tonight. Uh, as soon as Pawnee, it looks like he shared his screen, but I'm just waiting for him to go ahead and get that onto the, the right slides. But, um, I, I can go ahead and, and share with you some of the information that you should see coming onto your screen here momentarily. Um, the first is, you know, our goal here is to provide you with an overview and an update on our COVID-19 relief efforts and what we've been doing with something called Feeding BN and Beyond here in McLean County. So first off, some context, and I heard one of the callers during public comment reference this. Um, right before the, the pandemic hit, United Way of McLean County, along with other local United Ways and our state association, were in the state Capitol in Springfield in the Blue Room unveiling a report called ALIS. Um, ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And essentially, those are the people that are working but are living paycheck to paycheck. They frequently struggle to afford all of the necessities, and when something like this happens, they're probably more disproportionately impacted. We know as of two thousand seventeen, as a part of this ALIS report, we know, uh, it comes from, uh, American Community Survey, Bureau of Labor Statistics, HUD, a, a variety of well, uh, researched and reputable sources, that there are twenty-four thousand households in McLean County that struggle financially. About half of those, twelve thousand, are what would be considered at the poverty level, the other twelve thousand are what would be considered ALIS. So that's kind of the starting point for us from a data perspective on how we approach this issue. So as many as half of those, though, we suspect, don't have a pre-existing relationship with, uh, a social service agency or a governmental unit here in McLean County. Um, you know, they've been working, so they probably haven't had to access services through PATH or Project Oz or Mid-Central Community Action. All great organizations, for example, but some of these people that we would consider ALIS and financially unstable may not have, had a need at this point to have access to any of those services. We also know COVID-19 is causing impacts and disruption of an unprecedented nature and scale. Um, there's a quote by Einstein that says, "The thinking that got us you into a problem probably won't get you out of it." Something along those lines, right? Well, COVID-19 is basically challenging a lot of our basic assumptions. And many of the ways that we react during crises is not something that we're able to do right now because of social distancing, because of, um, because of, of, uh, the, uh, guidelines as far as gatherings. So many of the existing kind of efforts don't work. So why did we initiate Feeding BN and Beyond? We wanted to create a mechanism for quick and direct assistance for families in need. We wanted to foster collaborations and partnerships. So those were the two goals that we started out with. And then from there, we looked at these guiding principles. We wanna focus in on coalitions that are working. We wanted to leverage existing networks and not create new ones. We wanna create multiple benefits through any of our COVID-19 investments, and we're committed to transparency by communicating updates frequently and openly throughout the community. Pawnee, I believe this one's yours. You might be muted, though.
Pawnee, are you there?
You just muted, unmuted yourself.
Pawnee?
Pawnee, I'll let, I'll let you, um, unmute yourself. We were fighting against each other, sorry.
Pawnee, are you there?
When he's unmuted, he's speaking, but we can't hear him.
Well, in the meantime, uh, while he's muted maybe and you, we figure out those technical issues, I can pick up at least for a little while. You know, through the local stakeholders, through government, uh, input through, uh, input from the schools, social service agencies, others, we identified four key needs that have emerged due to COVID-19. Food insecurity is one, unemployment, shelter assistance, childcare assistance. Oh, Pawnee, it looks like you're back online now, so I'll turn it back to you.
Pawnee?
Can you hear me?
Unmuted, but we don't have audio.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I, I think we were going back and forth, I apologize for that and apologize for flashing my inbox there. I thought I was sharing my screen there for a bit. So I'll jump right in. Uh, since March sixteenth, when the hundred thousand dollar COVID Response Fund was established by United Way, we've been, uh, talking to a lot of people out there in the community. We've had more than two hundred, three hundred calls that we've made to social service agencies, families out there. There are four needs that have really emerged since March sixteenth that we've listened to. It's not data-driven, it's anecdotal, but it's based on people that we have spoken to. Food insecurity is a number one need that we've heard of. You've heard that through PATH, the steep increase in the cost that they're seeing. People need food on the table, and there are several families that are struggling. Unemployment, because of COVID, there are several small businesses that had to make hard choices to let go of their employees, especially the restaurants in town. Uh, and these, uh, restaurants are the ones that have actually been providing a source of employment to a lot of the low-income families that we're trying to support. Shelter assistance, you've heard about the eviction hole that State of Illinois has put in place, but I feel like we've kicked the can down the road. Uh, I think this will be a need, and will be a need in the next thirty to forty-five days, and I think this is the next frontier for us. Childcare assistance, as you may have seen, a three-year-old is who, uh, we live with. And as someone who has a child, uh, I can't relate to the experience that someone would go through had, if they lost their job and they're caring for their three-year-old and they're trying to get out there and find another job. They need that assistance from taking care of their children to go pursue another source of employment. So this is another, uh, need that's emerging out there. There are very few childcare providers that are open right now. One of the few childcare providers, uh, where was impacted by, an employee impacted by COVID. I think this is a growing need that's emerging in the upcoming days. Uh, we are focusing on two needs, food insecurity and unemployment, because we feel like those two are the imminent needs. As I mentioned to you, shelter assistance and childcare assistance are coming down the road. As David alluded to, we wanted to clear, uh, create clear transparency. That doesn't mean me flashing my inbox, but more importantly, talking about what we think United Way is doing, both in terms of the funds that are raised, but also how the funds are being allocated. To date, through the fundraising efforts, we've raised close to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's from the carpet sponsorships that we received, individual donors, and, uh, in, uh, money that has been donated by our foundations and organizations in town. We've also received hundred thousand dollars to the Illinois COVID Response Fund that was created by Governor Pritzker. Uh, that was in, uh, response to some of the initial food relief efforts that United Way has started, uh, back on March thirtieth. I'm gonna turn it over to David to talk briefly about that, those food relief efforts.
Thank you, Pawnee. So, uh, United Way so far is focused in on two ways to address the food access, food insecurity issue. Um, remember, we talked about one of the guiding principles is to leverage existing systems. Well, the school districts have a system set in place right now. Where their gaps are and what we're trying to accomplish is to ensure that we're not creating waste, duplication, or overlap. We're trying to work, uh, with partners in a, in a collaborative fashion. Schools can provide, uh, breakfast and lunch to those students that qualify for free or reduced lunch. Where they're missing, though, is the adult or non-school-aged child in the household as well as the evening meal. And so those are the two areas within that framework that we're looking to address. So we've worked with a variety of partners, as you can see on the screen there. We've worked to, to source food locally from the local grocers, from Prairie Earth Farms and others. We've partnered with ISU to provide a warehouse to aggregate the food. And then, as you can see on the screen, currently Leroy Lexington Ridgeview, Unit Five, and Olympia have been leveraging the food there to help address those two gaps of that adult or school-aged child in the house as well as the evening meal. And so over the last two weeks, as we've done that effort, we've, uh, helped to support about five hundred families. So, um, just to give you an idea of, of how we're also focused on being agile and being responsive here in the community, um, we'd actually started the school piece first, but then we had a grassroots effort locally called Feed Blow No Kids that many of you may be familiar with. And they were kind of at their outer limit as far as their resources, the volunteers available, et cetera. And so on a Friday afternoon, we were asked, you know, would you guys be able to make sure there's not a gap on that as of Monday? So, um, over the next twenty-four hours, thanks to, thanks to our partners at The Chamber, um, and some local restaurants, we were able to very quickly, from Friday, March twenty-seventh, by Monday, March thirtieth, to have in place a thousand meals a day that would, uh, do that evening meal. And we worked through a variety of partners to help, uh, make that happen. A variety of local restaurants, a variety of distribution sites. Feed Blow No Kids had been doing about six hundred meals a day. So you can see by just that first week, we had already increased that from about three thousand to about five thousand overall. Go ahead to the next slide, thank you. So we talked about that transparency factor. So we talked about that transparency fact, right? So we've spent to date about $29,000 through the supplementation of the food school or the school food program. And we've spent about $102,000 over the last month to help the supplementation and those scaling of the grassroots efforts locally. So based on what Bonnie shared, that's come in through private resources, sponsorships, grants, we still have about $329,000 available in that fund. So what do we mean by dual purpose? We talked about wanting to ensure that we're creating multiple benefits with our investments here. So we've heard this throughout the call as far as citizens asking questions about this, council members asking questions about this. One of the things we've done, things we've done is we've gotten the money very quickly out into the community. So in this month roughly, since we have introduced the COVID Community Care Fund, we've purchased over $130,000 worth of food from local restaurants, suppliers, farmers. And that translates into wages for local workers and meals for families and individuals. So it creates that dual purpose by helping support and stabilize, create cash flow, create wages for local employees, some of those ones who may not meet the federal poverty levels and so therefore may not be eligible for some of those other supports. This is a way for us to try and create a dual purpose with that. And as you can see, the outcome from it, the result is over 26,000 meals delivered to date. These next two slides, we'll just leave up for about 10, 15 seconds each. These are just the partners that we've been working with. These are the distribution sites that have helped raise or have helped distribute the food to citizens here locally. Or to, I should say, not just citizens, I should just say to people in need locally. And then these are an example or sampling of the small businesses that we've helped, or the businesses locally that we've leveraged in order to get that food out to those in need.
So I want to take a minute to jump in there. The food relief efforts are for any resident who lives in McLean County, not necessarily a resident or a citizen like David was talking about. We're also trying to secure the food in an equitable manner from all the restaurants in town. And we're also trying to be culturally sensitive to the needs of our residents by securing food in a manner that we see fit. So we believe the need is much bigger than 1,600 meals a day. And we're talking about 1,600 meals a day from Monday through Friday. The reason we haven't picked the weekends is because some of the nonprofits probably don't have the staffing or the volunteers to conduct the food relief efforts over the weekend. One of the reasons, one of the ways in which we're trying to scale our operation, we went into COVID relief efforts around the first week of March. We made a decision to get in to do this on March 16th, stood up the food relief efforts by March 30th. But this task force, the people that you see out there are the ones who are really making a difference. The collaboration that you see in the community has been phenomenal. It is important to realize that once you remove your title, the organizations that you represent and are willing to listen, there are a lot of organizations that are willing to come forward and help out. I want to give a special shout out to City of Bloomington, Melissa Hahn, and, and as well as Tim, who have been a really good partner in thinking through some of these solutions. But the need is much bigger than what we're doing right now. I do want to reinforce that. There are a couple of other things that have really been surfacing since March 30th, and we are trying to be mindful of that. The reason why we went down the prepared meal route is because of two reasons. On March 30th, we were exploring two paths. One path was can we do food pantry, food boxes versus prepared meals? There was an acute shortage of food to do food boxes back on March 30th, as well as we saw this dual investment by investing into businesses so that we create employment for our local residents. Because we see this as an important self-worth and our total well-being of our families. If we can create a source of employment for them, let them be in charge of how they want to leverage that money to provide for their families and for themselves. The food supply has been, has changed some. So we've been collaborating with East U Christian Church and Midwest Food Bank. And we've piloted out creating staple bags. These are staples canned foods, shelf-stable food that we can provide to our families in addition to the prepared meals that we're giving out. We've tried that out with Western Avenue Community Center, as well as with Immigration Project or BN Welcoming Group, and it has worked really well. We're hoping to scale up those operations in the upcoming days. You saw, you've seen the announcement by Governor Pritzker for the need for sewn masks. To give you some data, some of our food distribution partners have been observing to the extent to which the families are wearing masks when they pick up the food. Maybe one in five or one in six families are actually wearing masks when they come out to pick up the food. So we made it a point to really get more hand-sewn masks, but also distribute those hand-sewn masks through the food distribution sites. And this is a drive that United Way has been doing in collaboration with all our food distribution partners. A huge shout out to David Hurst from BN Welcoming, as well as from Immigration Project to make this happen. So a third need that has emerged is paper products. Wesley United Methodist Church is one of the few places in town that provides paper products. That would be toilet paper, paper towels, diapers, feminine hygiene products, and what have you. Back in March, they, they did 200, they supported 200 families. In April, they've supported 400 families. The increase is really huge. There are other churches like East U that are trying to make a difference. But this is another growing need that United Way has agreed to partner with Wesley United Methodist Church to ensure that we can provide some of these paper products through Wesley United Methodist Church, as well as other food distribution partners that we're working with, which is about 14 of them. How can you help? I think this is an important question. Several of you have asked that question, have, have asked this question. As you listen to some of those families that have spoken earlier, I, I think the need is, from a food perspective, is imminent. I think we have to do some listening. But I think we all collectively, as a community, we have the means to solve this. It's not, the onus for solving this is, is not on one person or one entity. I think it requires collaboration. It requires us to really think outside the box and think about philanthropy or service from a different view. Our ask of you is, if someone's interested in working with us, collaborating with us, serving as a food distribution partner, or in other means, please let us know. You can find me or David Taylor, you can find me on Facebook or some of those places. We would love to partner with you. Dave, and I'll speak to this briefly. There are other needs that are surfacing, and they will show up in the next 30 to 45 days. We are actively working on farming coalitions across several service providers in this community to think about what those solutions would look like in the shelter assistance space. We're starting to talk about what those solutions may look like or the coalitions may look like in the childcare assistance space. Scott Black, hopefully this answers your question and validates the, what the needs are in the community or how you might be able to assist. But I would say that please provide some patience. I think we need to do more listening. There are people who are willing to collaborate, but everyone is trying to find a solution on their own. Let the collaboration exist and help the collaboration really work through solutions before we chime in and work through them. David?
Yep, so I'll just, a few quick things here. You can see the website, uwmclean.org. The Alice Report, at least the two-page kind of brief version that shows you what a survival versus a stability budget looked like, as well as some of that information I talked about in the first slide. You can find that on our COVID page and other resources available as well. As you can see, we're giving periodic updates. You can contact me through the website, or you know, if somebody needs that information, we can obviously can get ahold of us. We're trying to adhere to social distancing and CDC guidelines. Even though we technically fall under essential business, we're being mindful about how frequently staff are in the office and we're primarily trying to work from home. So the best way to reach us will be via email at first, and then we can communicate via cell phones and whatnot. But you'll find a whole host of information on our website as far as what we're doing, including these kind of updates like we've shared here. So with that, I think we're ready for questions, Bonnie, unless you've got anything you'd like to close with.
I just mentioned one thing. We are hosting weekly virtual down hall meetings.
Every two weeks.
And our intent is to actually, again, create that collaboration and let people know where we stand on things. Several of you have already attended that, some of those virtual down hall meetings. We've also published one of those virtual down hall meetings using a YouTube video. We encourage you to take a look at that. I do want to say one thing. It's important for us to stay together and work together in this, in this conversation. We invite your input and ways in which we can work together with you. Listening is an important aspect of this. United Way, as you have heard from one of the callers earlier, I wish there was no need for charity. I, I hope that is the case sometime in the future. But it's important for us to actually see that we are in this together and how we can do. This is not a hand down. This is a hand up. This is about equity, and this is about us staying together. But it requires us to do some listening. So thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to you for some questions.
Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, Dave. We very much appreciate all you're doing and your, your hard work on this. Council, questions?
Mayor Renner, we've got Councilmember Carrillo and then Crable.
Okay, I'm, I'm losing everybody for some reason. Can you hear me?
We can.
Maybe it's because you're sitting in the dark.
No. Everybody's gone. Okay, so we have Councilmember, I'm sorry, you said Carrillo and who?
Carrillo, Crable, and Black.
Okay, Carrillo, Crable, and Black. Go ahead, in that order. Jen?
Thank you. I've got a number of questions, so please bear with me, but I'm happy to help extend the time if need be. So my first question is, you all put up that $100,000 pretty quickly after the pandemic news hit. I want to ask, because we have heard the argument here on council that data collection is important before any sort of money gets put up. Why did you all decide to move forward before collecting extensive data on what the food need was going to be?
I'll, I'll answer that, and David can clean me up. So Jen, I, I put it this way, we had money, very little money in our coffers. We said, we think that all the anecdotal stories that we've been hearing from other parts of the country, it's important for us to take a leadership role. But we also had a perspective that if that money was not used, we could easily reallocate that money for other things that United Way is doing. So we were picking up on some of the stories from other communities, and we wanted to remain proactive. And we wanted to go in with the faith that, as Karen Zangrilli mentioned, we as a community have always pulled together, and we will pull together. Well, we needed to create that collaboration front. And if United Way were to move ahead with it, we thought others would come along on that journey. David, anything you would say to clean me up?
No, I think you hit that well. I think it was important, we felt we were in a position to be able to act quickly, quickly and to be proactive in our response. And better to move quickly, we felt, in that space because we don't have some of the same restrictions that maybe some of our partners in this space do sometimes as it, as to how the money is utilized or how the resources or support is utilized.
Got it. Thank you so much, and I really commend you for using and honoring people's lived experiences, even though they might be dismissed as anecdotal, to, to move into action. My second question is, are you continuing to fund community nonprofits? Or have all of your funds had to be redirected towards this effort?
David, do you want me to take it, or would you like to?
No, so there are funds that are going out in the community besides this. So many of you are probably aware, we've got a $250,000 commitment to the Adolescent Outpatient Center here locally. One of our primary focuses as an organization is for youth and family here. And we know there's been a, a need to help support additional behavioral health services as it relates to young people in our community. So that's one investment that we've got planned here for 2020 and ready to go whenever they're ready to go, just based on, I think, the COVID-19, the pandemic really upset some of the timing of the RFP, that sort of thing. Additionally, we've been doing some investments into workforce development that also have been kind of upended by COVID-19. So yes, we, we've got various investments besides this that are going out into the community, but this is our primary focus right now.
Got it. Then I, I noticed that I think most of the businesses that you mentioned purchasing food from are members of the McLean County Chamber of Commerce. Are you purchasing with any small businesses, small restaurants that are not members of the Chamber? And then to that end, I'm curious about why you made the decision. I saw some, some larger corporations show up there, like Chick-fil-A and Jimmy John's and Subway. And so I am curious about why you opted for those as opposed to some of, some smaller businesses.
So I'll, I'll take that, and David can completely clean me up. The way we approached that was we needed to do 1,000 meals a day. And from a logistics standpoint, you're talking about a United Way that has two and a half staff besides the CEO. We actually, again, in this true spirit of collaboration, reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and asked them, our budget was $5 a meal. We told the Chamber, is there anyone and everyone in a very equitable manner within your membership who would be interested in partnering with us? It was mainly about scale, and you know, there are very few small businesses that can do at that scale. And now we're talking about 1,600, some days close to about 2,000 meals a day. That was one of the reasons. The second thing is that we also wanted to get to some small businesses because of those, the cultural sensitivity to. There are some restaurants, which again, I can't validate if all of them are Chamber members. Some may not be, but I'll let David verify that in a minute. We wanted to, again, be culturally responsive to those needs as well. So I can't speak to that, but maybe David, if you can speak to whether, if they are, those other small businesses are Chamber members or not?
No, I think you hit it on the head. Not all of the restaurants are Chamber members. That was the premise that we started with. But a lot of that, to Bonnie's point, was about speed and scale. We essentially, at three, three o'clock on a Friday afternoon, this wasn't on our radar. By 4:30, it was like, we've got to find 5,000 meals for next week in a, in a day here. And so we, you know, have really good relationships with the Chamber and with the partnership. And for many of those restaurants, a lot of them, it's a supply issue too. You know, at that point, we were about two weeks into the closures. Many of them didn't have the supplies on hand, and we have to have them deliver in about a four-hour window to 14 locations. And so it was a, a scale and a speed thing primarily.
Yeah, I want to reassure the council too. Our path is really being guided by the need that we see. Our path is also guided by our principles of action and as well as equity. So, and we are judging all our actions and decisions based on that.
Thank you so much. Action and equity are two of my favorite words. My very last question is twofold, which is, would you agree with the assessment that has been shared here before that our social service agencies, our existing social service agencies are already able to meet the needs of every resident who will be affected by the COVID-19 crisis? So that's part one of the question. The second part is, if the city did decide to institute a direct aid program to help people most in need and, and working poor people who are now unemployed specifically, would that relieve some pressures from? are now unemployed specifically, would that relieve some pressures from your current programming, your, the expenses of your current programming, in your estimation?
So, so I'll try and take a stab at that, and Pawnee, you know, feel free to clean me up in this case. You know, I, I really believe that that question is going to be a function of really three key things. It's going to be about capacity, it's going to be about resources, and it's going to be about any restrictions that are placed on those resources. One of the consistent themes I heard during public comment, during various experts' comments, are about some of the restrictions that are, at times are in place on some of the resources. So I think that, I know that's not a direct answer maybe to your question, but at least from my end, it's going to be a byproduct or a function of all three of those things, as to how effectively a coalition can help address the problems. To Pawnee's point earlier too, I don't think this is all going to fall on social services, nor should it. I think it has to be a collective effort, it has to be a collaborative effort. It's going to require public-private partnerships, it's going to require interventions at a variety of different levels and different partners, not just all on one sector of our economy to deal with this.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add there, with what David is sharing, is that I think we, we're not in a place to truly estimate what the need is. Let me repeat that. I don't think we truly know what the extent of the need is, and more importantly, how long the need is going to be. We unfortunately don't have an end in sight for COVID at this time. And some of the needs, although some, we have heard some stories, shelter assistance and childcare assistance has not surfaced yet. It will. Don't get me wrong, it will. But it hasn't surfaced yet. I think we need to let our social service agencies that are the experts in the space to really collaborate and work together to formulate solutions. We need to be good listeners to say what they have to share, and also ask the question like several of you are asking is, how do we help? I don't think it, the burden of these solutions is going to lie on one person or one institution. It is going to require us to work together. So I hope that we will get to work together. It will require public-private partnership. Not to what extent, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had down the road.
And, and just maybe to your second question too here, this may have a few of you fallen out of your chair, but as United Way, we're not here to ask you for money. Ultimately, if there's a decision that you like what you see, this is what we encourage when we've had these town halls, when we've talked with various donors, various corporations locally, et cetera. If you think that we're effective and we're executing, then by all means, you know, support us in that way. But that's not what we're here for. We're essentially here to kind of share with you what we're trying to do to address needs in the community that were created by COVID-19. And really, it's up to your body to make decisions on if you want to release any funds and where those funds should go.
Thank you very much. We're going to need to, actually, we're almost out of our, our time, but I'm going to move to Councilmember Crable. And if, if you, not to put any pressure, but if you take more than a couple of minutes, I'm, we're going to have to extend the time.
Yeah, Mayor, we've got a bunch of people that want to speak. Can we extend it 10 minutes? I'll make a motion to extend the discussion 10 minutes.
Okay. Second, second by Carrillo. Matty Port, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
10 minutes is never going to be enough, but yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Actually, if we're concise, it could be enough. I have faith. So Councilmember Crable, you're, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and Pawnee and David, thank you so much. You know, I like those words too, equitable, collaborative. You know, it's, it's about being creative and showing servant leadership. So, so really appreciate what you guys are doing and the collaborative nature of it. Just a couple of quick questions and things I wanted to point out. When listening to the town hall, did I hear right that, that you thought 80, 8,500 employees of restaurants had lost their jobs in this community?
No, I'll clean that up. Patrick Hoban had indicated that there are 8,500 employed in the food service sector in the community. And what we're suggesting is, is that how many of those have been at risk because of this, or have been disrupted, or put out of work because of it? We're not saying all of them are.
Gotcha, okay. And Pawnee, you had mentioned about the need being much greater than the 1,600 meals that you're providing now. Have you guys looked into the future at how many meals you could provide, that you would need to provide to meet, to meet all the need?
No, there's no, as I mentioned Jeff, there's no way to estimate what it is. We're just taking one week at a time. We have not put out the ask for food distribution through the social media for two reasons. We didn't want to overwhelm our volunteers at these food distribution centers because of social distancing. Not that we want to have all our residents rush out to a food distribution center and put themselves at risk. We are taking a very strategic approach to reaching these families through the food distribution partners, the calling on the families that they know, and making them aware of it. So we are taking this through lens of, what do we need to do next week, and the following week, and so on and so forth. There's no way for us to estimate what the true need is out there.
And maybe to your question too, that, that's part of the reason for that multipurpose investment. You know, those wages, or, or that money that we're spending on local restaurants may help stabilize 10, 50, 100 of those employees. And those are then people that aren't going to require some of the other assistance and stretch out what is needed in that area as well.
Yes, and just a follow up to that now is, with the money that United Way is receiving, are they paying the restaurants directly for the meals that they provide?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Very proud of you.
Yeah, usually with the, as soon as we have an invoice, it's paid within 24 to 48 hours. I would like to point out, we also, and this is another example of great collaboration, right? The Boys and Girls Club, at least to my knowledge, I believe through the end of May, through the school year, or what would be traditionally the school year, has a grant through the USDA that pays $2.50 to the meal. So for the 750 meals daily that we help provide to the Boys and Girls Club, essentially, United Way and Boys and Girls Club are splitting the cost 50/50.
Great.
Jeff?
I just wanted to make sure to point out, is it accurate that you guys, for the United Way has spent for food distribution about $130,000 in the last month, or in the month of March?
That, that's money that we've either already paid or is coming due here as soon as we get an invoice from them. That's through last Friday.
And Jeff, to clarify that, that's not exclusively restaurants. Restaurants is about $100,000. The remaining 30-ish thousand is through the local farms, grocers, Midwest Food Bank, and other places.
Great, all right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Paulman Black, then Matthew, Milowamway, Boland, and Bray, in that order. Paulman Black?
Scott? I'm here, I'm sorry. Yeah, so thank you guys, and thank you for answering the question of how we can help with the presentation. So I, I'll ask you the same question that I asked everybody else. Is there, is there anything you've heard either in the conversations from the, from today, or out in the community that you can share, that share the experiences the United Way has had, or are different than what the United Way has experienced?
Scott, I think you've heard the presentation. It kind of validates some of the perspectives that you've heard from the people who came in. I apologize for doing this, I usually don't do this, but I'm going to ask you your question with the question, is there a perspective that you didn't hear in our presentation that you felt was contrary to what, what came through?
No, the reason I'm asking it to everybody is, is, you know, one of the things that we've talked about here is trying to get our arms around where the need is and how to best assist. And, you know, there's a lot of stories that are out there, some true, some not. There's a lot, there's data that's out there, and it's so hard to track because we have so many variables with federal, state aid coming through, local aid stepping up. I mean, I volunteer with a non-for-profit organization who has not seen a lot of calls come in for direct help, does not mean that that's not happening. So I wanted to afford, you know, Path, United Way, and, and the county, the opportunity to talk through some of the things that they have been hearing, and either correct the record or confirm what, what, what they're hearing through their conversations.
So I'll share a couple of thoughts, Scott, and I'll let David kick me virtually in the shin down the road. The needs are actually evolving. So if someone says that these are the needs, I think we need to take everything with a pinch of salt. I'll tell you the reason why. I, I believe it was Alder Person Boland who asked the question about mental health, and Karen Zangrilli said, in the month of March, that wasn't an issue. In the month of April, it was a steep increase. The paper needs thing wasn't an issue in March, but in the month of April, it is. Shelter assistance is going to be in need in May or in June. It's not a need right now. I think there is a need for us to do some listening. And I'll also share this, Jamie Mathie brought up the question about being prepared as a place for all businesses to go, to really understand how they can seek assistance. Where would a family go? What's the one single source besides Path, and Path does a really nice job? How do we provide that, that single source of entry? Some communities are proactively thinking about that. Do we want to be one of those communities? I think those are the questions that we need to, as a community, talk about. So, you know, there's no such thing as validating what you've heard or not. I think everything is a snapshot in time. And I think we need to be better listeners to understand how the needs arise. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there, David.
Well, and I'll just, I'll just speak quickly to that. One, we know that people are going to come in through a variety of mechanisms right now. For those who may not have a relationship, or know what Path is, or what Project Oz is, et cetera, they may have a seven-year-old, right? And so their main point of entry might be through the school system. For somebody else, it might be through their place of worship. So at least right now, to Pawnee's point, we're trying to cast a broad net and not assume that everyone will come in through one door. They're probably going to come in through a variety of doors right now, and we have to be agile and be ready to adapt to that fact. And, you know, from the, the other end of it, it's hard to get our arms around, as he said, that the need's evolving, it will continue to change. I think with each thing that happens, there's going to be another domino that falls, and we just don't know or can't anticipate or expect what all those are going to be. So we just have to be responsive and be ready to act quickly based on what develops.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. And, and what I'll say, just briefly, is that, you know, I, I think that we are a community that wants to be proactive. We've seen a lot of folks step up and donate and help, and there, there's, this need is continually evolving. You guys are right. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be painted in thinking this is a static issue. What the problems today are different than they were a month ago, and they're going to be different a month from now. And, and I, as I look to craft, you know, a policy or a way that the city can help, you know, I turn to the facts and the data that we have, and to make the best possible decisions. You know, we can't spin up a quick direct aid program because we have legalities, we have taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that we're measuring anything for accuracy, that it's doing what we want it to do, and that it's, it's, it's of course legal. So these conversations have been really helpful to illustrate what each of these organizations is doing. And, you know, you guys both said it in your presentation, this is going to take everybody at the table. There's no one entity that's, is equipped or able to deal with these challenges right now. And so if we're all working together, we can come up with the best option. So I appreciate you guys sharing your experiences and your facts, and thank you this evening for coming on.
Thank you.
Next, Councilmember Mathie.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and I appreciate what Scott just said too, right? I mean, tonight has been a night of, you know, hearing from some of the experts in the community. You know, the first time we've, we've actually gotten some solid numbers about stuff instead of stories that have been sent to us, that some of the, the emails we've got are stories from other towns as opposed to Bloomington. So I appreciate that we're, we're getting to this discussion right now. I, I really appreciate the fact that United Way caught the ball from the Feeding Blono Kids Group. Amazing group of people, did, did a great job. I know that many of us donated to that group when they got up and running to fill that gap right off the bat when the schools, you know, first did the stay-at-home. So thank you guys for your quick effort to catch the ball there. I was in a lot of conversations with that group as they were going on, and, you know, helped to make sure that did. I also appreciate what you said about small businesses and scale for small restaurants. As somebody who ran a small restaurant for 13 years, if you came and asked me for 1,600 meals, I might have just fainted right there. So, you know, and, and everybody, but all the, all the organizations, some of my favorite restaurants, my favorite small businesses in town are on that list of people who are doing amazing work. So, you know, public thank you to all those restaurants that are, that are stepping up and doing stuff right there too. I had a question. Pawnee, you referenced earlier some of the stuff with the food bank challenges that they were having, and I'm, I'm wondering if you can share some information with us. One of the things that we had heard was that some of the food banks were running out of food. I talked to seven different food banks this week, and none of them had said that they were running out of food yet. I know we have more than seven in town, but is that still an issue with the food banks are, are running out of food, or they don't have enough food to distribute when they get to the weekly distributions?
Can I ask for some clarity there, Jamie?
Sure.
So when you say food bank, is that the same thing as a food pantry?
Yes.
Okay. So there are 94 food pantries in town.
Okay.
And there's one food bank that provides that assistance besides East, Eastern Illinois Food Bank, that's Midwest Food Bank. I'm trying to get to the source, which is Midwest Food Bank. Derek Ingram is the Executive Director, an awesome collaborator, and a huge shout out for her. She's on our Advisory Task Force. That was the first phone call that we made on March 27th, when David and I were trying to explore solutions. Midwest Food Bank historically has received food donations from local grocers, and that's how they made things work. They would provide food donations to the food pantries, and the 94 food pantries, or I don't know how many they work with exactly, they would distribute that food for free. Because of COVID crisis and the lack of food supply, there were very few food grocers that are actually donating the food now. So Midwest Food Bank has to take what they get, and at times they have to go buy what they're not getting to keep things going. And back in March, Midwest Food Bank and others had received orders and requests from places like Chicago and New York, which were needing like trucks and trucks loads of food bank, of food boxes. And that's where they were allocating their energies to. So if you're hearing that some of the food pantries are the seven, I ask that we cast our listening broader than that, because there are 95, 94 food pantries out there. And the perspectives are different based on where the food pantry is located, the families that they work with, where the food comes from. So there are different nuances out there, Jamie. So I just wanted to seek that clarity before we frame an opinion on it. I don't know, does it help?
No, that's exactly what I was looking for. That's, that's exactly the answer that I was hoping that you were going to have, because I knew there were a lot more than the seven that I managed to get ahold of. So I just wanted to know what the broader scope and what the broader picture looked like, since you mentioned it earlier.
I'd also say that there are some residents in our community that would need different things. Some of our residents may need beans and rice as opposed to other things. So again, where do we secure this food? How do we provide that need? All of that is a logistics piece that Midwest Food Bank, Eastern, sorry, Midwest Food Bank, East Ukristian Church, and United Way are trying to figure out right now through the staple food process, Jamie.
Perfect. I, one of the things that you mentioned earlier too, is where do citizens enter into the process as well? And what I would say that one of the good, better sources of all that information is actually the City of Bloomington website. For anybody that's not aware right now, there's an entire page on the website in big giant letters when you hit cityblm.org, that Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus is, and, and his crew have been making sure it has every link and every resource that we can find to any program. So just a plug, check cityblm.org if you want, just about as good a list as any that are available in town. And then, you know, just thank you-
And then, you know, just thank you. Appreciate you guys coming on and I appreciate you guys providing information to us that we, we really needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Mathie was correct. We're well over the extension of time. Let me ask, at this point, I have three alderpeople who want to speak. Can I have a motion for another 10 minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Okay. Moved by, second by Cravill. Madam Court, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowmway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Milowmway, you've got the floor. I'm having trouble unmuting. Oh, I unmuted you.
Oh, okay. Wasn't Alderwoman Boland ahead there?
At this point, I'm doing them in the order that I see them. She's coming next.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay. Well, thank you. I want to say thank you to Pawnee and David. This has been very good information. It's very good to hear from those who are actually on the ground and, and doing the work. And this is the kind of information that I had been looking for all throughout. It would help inform what, you know, I would do in the future and consider. One of the, the questions that I, I have is whether or not you, there are numbers from the McLean County Chamber of Commerce to help us determine how many people in restaurants were let go as a result of COVID-19. I think that information would be also helpful as another measure of understanding what's going on.
David, keep me honest. I think, Mboka, if you're asking for unemployment information by the restaurant sector, I think that's a piece of information that EDC would be tracking as opposed to Chamber. I don't know the frequency with which they get that data. David, do you?
I'm not certain either. I would say that that's probably the right organization would be the EDC because they'd be looking at it at a macro level and they'd probably be able to match that up more quickly. To my knowledge, though, I'm not sure if they have that information yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, we'll follow up with Patrick then.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next, Councilmember Boland and then Kim Bray.
Yes, I just want to pretty much thank you for bringing all the groups together because collaboration really solves a lot. And I've said this to several people on the council, but I can't say it enough. What you're doing and all the groups that have come before us this evening is like an old-fashioned barn raising. You're coming together with a lot of resources to meet a goal or a need that's in this community. And I've seen that over and over as long as I've lived here. And I think it's great. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Emig.
Yes, thank you very much again. And I, I'll be very quick. I want to, I want to say three things. The first thing is point of entry. I think this idea that we accumulate information, I'm not even going to use the word data, but just information, and it's ongoing so that we're, we're collecting information as it's happening in a centralized location is probably one of the best way forward. And the coalition idea that we're pulling together those who have expertise in the need to inform us about how we can best serve. And finally, I heard again and again to, to be good listeners. And I, I want to just underscore that, that the listening is really invaluable. So thank you so much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, Councilmember Bray, do you still have your hand up? Yeah, sorry.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pawnee and David, for your presentation this evening. As we listened here, we heard about you, you work to actively identify areas of need and that as these arise, you take action to address them. Can you tell me the methodologies you use for delivery? Because I've heard things about providing food and providing connectivity to other resources. Do you give out cash to individuals in need? Or again, could you just kind of explain a little bit about your methods of delivery?
So right now, those are going, those payments go directly to the, the local businesses and organizations. We anticipate probably as some of these other needs come up, like childcare assistance, for example, that, that some of those payments might be going directly to nonprofits that are providing that kind of assistance. We haven't entertained to this point, direct payments to individuals. That's just not something that we've even thought about or considered at this point because we've been trying to address the need and the scale that's in front of us as it relates to food. So from a delivery or, or distribution mechanism, we felt that the most effective way in the short term right now to create positive impact on multiple fronts was to get payments out to local businesses, farmers and others that are employing probably people that we know are at risk. And then, but at the same time, produce a product, in this case, a meal or a box of food, et cetera, that's going to leverage existing systems in a way that's going to meet the needs of those that have food access or food insecurity issues.
Yes, understood. So you're, you're kind of replicating your usual method of operating. Would that be correct to say that you find a way to deliver goods and services without issuing cash or putting cash in people's hands? Is that correct?
I would say that's a fair way to categorize it. Yes, we're trying to work through, I would say what we're trying to do is work through existing systems, right? Schools already have mechanisms in place to deliver food, to address food access and food insecurity issues. So we've just worked to come alongside of them and find out what additional needs that they have in order to meet the growing need. Similarly, with some of our partners throughout the nonprofit and, and faith-based community, what, what are they seeing that they could use additional assistance with, like the paper products and some of those other things? And then working through existing relationships and networks rather than creating something new.
So Kim, maybe I'll, I'll add to that. If the need arises, we are trying to understand how large the need is. And we're going to the people who have the expertise and the knowledge to deliver the need, and we're asking them the question, how do we solve this? So that's the approach that we're taking. And it's only been about five weeks right now, but I think that's, that approach has worked because we're saying, I trust in you. I know that you know the solution. We're here to help. How do we help you?
Thank you. So I hear you saying you work with trusted partners, you, you identify needs and, and then you connect the dots for those who, who are in need, frankly. So when we think about your, your usual method of operating, delivering to, to identified needs, and now the current challenges to identify needs, you know, again, it's, it's never included this concept of just giving cash to someone. Is that correct? Does not include that.
The way we are working right now, and again, we're to kick in the shin, David, do that later. We, our current mode of operation, we are providing cash assistance. That's what you're asking, Kim. We are not providing cash assistance.
Okay.
I'd also open the door by saying, though, we are thinking differently. As the need arises, as we, our models have to evolve, we are not locking down to this is the only way to do things. So far, in the last five to six weeks, we have not considered that as an option. We want to work with people to understand how best we provide those solutions. We're not ruling anything out at this time. If that's a better way to answer your question.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate your thoughtful approach to this and, and the collaboration with, with trusted partners and coming here this evening, explaining your, your perspective. Thank you for all the work you do. The role that you play in the community is very important. So thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate, we all appreciate all the work that you've done, David, Pawnee, and we continue to want to work together with you as we move forward. At this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to our only action item on our regular agenda, and that is consideration and potential action regarding ordinance 2020-18 declaring a local emergency due to COVID-19 virus. And that is specifically to allow the proration of the city's video gaming license fee as requested by the legal department. I'm going to start by asking if there is a motion and a second on this, and then we have discussion. Moved by Alderwoman Bray, second by Alderwoman Boland. Discussion, Councilmember Correa. I'm trying to unmute you.
Yeah, no, I wasn't sure if there was going to be a presentation. It looked like there maybe was going to be.
Oh, sorry, there is a presentation. I jumped to the presentation. I'm sorry. Actually, let me, let me go to the mo, the motion and then we'll, we'll shift to Tim that has the presentation.
Well, so can I ask my question or no? Not yet.
At this point, we have a motion and a second. So go ahead and ask whatever question you want.
Sweet. Thank you. So I guess my question, given that I've heard from a number of downtown businesses, is why we didn't decide to include liquor license fees in this ordinance?
I think, I think you're going to find the answer to that question. I, I think part of that is it's just much more complicated to deal with liquor licenses because some people are, are still selling liquor and some people are not. But I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason. I'm sorry, I, I preempted your five-minute presentation, but go ahead.
No, real quick, the preview for this one, this is our placeholder that we're going to have on every regular agenda if there needs to be an update. And the update for tonight is, like the mayor said, the proration of video gaming license fee for the amount of time that the establishments are, are closed and not able to operate. Now shift to Alderwoman Correa's question. That's one that we just recently heard about and it's not, you know, not that we can't do it, but it's not that simple. You still have some businesses that are doing curbside liquor pickup. You also have liquor, I'm sorry, liquor establishments that sell alcohol as their primary business is tucked into these liquor licenses as well. So now knowing about it, if it's the desire of council for us to look into this, we'll try to figure it out. And we will.
Other comments on this?
Like, yeah, I just want to follow up by saying, yeah, I, I personally be very interested in us looking at how we can help some of our establishments that sell liquor, but that right now aren't doing curbside.
Yeah, especially if, if they're not doing it at all. And, you know, we would, we could, you know, have somebody say, if you have receipts that show no sales.
Yes.
And we could do something for you. Again, I don't know what that would look like, but we would, obviously that, those are the things that staff can look at. Anything else? Oh, excuse me, I have Councilmember Cravill and Councilmember Mathie in that order. Councilmember Cravill.
Yes, just briefly, Mayor. And Leslie was able to answer some questions for me I had on this, but just wanted to point a few things out from what Leslie said that I think would be important. Generally, I think the refund per terminal for the 2020 license is $60. And then the next renewal is due April, was I think due, was due April 1st, but it's for license terminal fees, but that's not going to be due until 10 days after the emergency is lifted. And then there'll be another refund depending on how long this goes. So just wanted to bring those points out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mathie.
Tim, my question was, as part of the original emergency order we passed, I, I thought there was a provision that said that all payments would be due, but there would be no late fees assessed for those payments to the City of Bloomington until 30 days after the governor lifts the emergency orders. Wouldn't that include both the gaming licenses and the liquor license fees in that one? Or no?
I can pass to Jeff, but we specifically mentioned those and they come in front of council they act on.
Well, but they still, I, I think that the answer, Jeff, you can clarify this, I think the answer there is that you would, what we're talking about here is not charging for the video gaming while you do not have the video gaming, not just not fine, you know, penalizing you, waiting until you open your, your, your business and have good video. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah. In our, in our emergency ordinance, we actually, that provision applied to taxes for food and beverage. And we provided that those taxes would not be due until 30 days after the governor's declaration ended. So this is, as the mayor said, this is something a little bit different than that. This is actually prorating the video gaming licenses for the amount of time that they are prohibited by the Illinois Gaming Board from actually operating. Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does. It was, I guess I was, I'm glad that we're having this conversation because I was reading this differently, the ordinance. So I'm, I'm glad we're talking about that. Okay. One of the, I guess one of my concerns with that concept is that a lot of the government assistance programs for small businesses that are put in place right now are based on, they want to know and they, they're asking businesses to establish the fees and bills that they currently have to pay so that those can be either waived or reimbursed as you go along. And, you know, a lot of what we've been doing is deferring payments, assuming that the reimbursement for those is going to be coming in. If we start waiving payments of various things, that federal reimbursement for those business fees won't be coming through the same. So I don't know, that, that puts a different spin on this for me.
All right, at this point, if we will go ahead and vote, obviously, we have a motion on the floor. Ayes in favor, nays opposed. Madam Court, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Boland.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowmway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries or no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move then to our update finance director's report and I'll turn that over to Mr. Gleason and then I guess Mr. Rappaport.
I'm going to do a quick handoff to Scott. So go for it, Scott.
We, we can't hear you, Scott. You're, you're muted.
Okay. How about now? Are we good?
Good.
All right. Sorry about that. Watching people not unmute themselves all night and then I did it. I guess, can you go ahead and go to this, the next slide, please? I want to do a, a quick comment and remind everyone that the city is primarily on a cash basis. Oh, go back one, please. Back one slide, please. There we go. That the city is primarily on a cash basis, accounting-wise during the year. And then after the year's over, we true it up with the audit. So why that's important, a reminder that our revenues are received one to two months behind the month that we're reporting on. So you can see that this is the March report, yet the column that shows a number of months collected varies considerably. The sales taxes, we don't receive for a couple of months. So my point here is that, that there aren't any material impacts from the effects of COVID-19 reflected in these revenues so far. We did have food and beverage.
Zoom in. Is there any way you can zoom in? I just, I'm not able to see those numbers. If not, that's okay. I just figured out what is.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to try, continue to work on improving the, increasing the size of this. I was going to say that food and beverage did come in under for the first time this year for February, that those, February is reflected in the food and beverage numbers here. But then hotel motel came in over. So I think that might have just been an anomaly. So I will stick with my comment that material impacts for COVID are not yet reflected in our. in our major tax revenue reports. Highlighting again, home rental sales tax under budget year-to-date by the $238,000, yet looking down at local use tax, you can see that that is over budget by $325,000. If you recall, local use tax is where the internet sales tax revenues are captured from the state. They come in to us in the form of a local use tax. So, this is further indication of the migration, you know, to internet purchasing versus local brick and mortar. Next slide, please. We have updated, this is the general fund revenue expenditure exhibit. We have updated this for the numbers that were presented last Monday, including the projection for COVID. You can, I'm just going to zoom all the way down to the bottom. Last Monday, I went through and indicated that our current projections are showing about a $3 million loss for the general fund. There was a $1 million planned use of restricted fund balance. So, we started the year approximately $22.1 million in fund balance. So, you can see down at the bottom there, we have that $20.1 million, $20.2 million that was projected last Monday. These numbers reflect the detail that we went through when we did that projection. I'll bring your focus back up to the second line, the taxes line, where our projected adjustment to the budget is $3 million. That's, that's about a $4 million swing from where we were last, last month. And that's fully the effects of the shelter in place and the closing of all the programs. Well, that's a different line I'm, because the shelter in place, major effects on sales tax, food and beverage taxes, all those hotel motel taxes. And then, we also have some offsets down in the expense categories for delays in some expenses and delays in some hiring for seasonals. Next slide, please. For the enterprise funds, highlighting the revenue trend line, it's pretty much the last line of data. Our targeted trend at this point of the year is 92%. You can see sewer, we, we just, we missed the budget on that one. But otherwise, the other major enterprise funds, water, storm, solid waste, all tracking consistently. Golf has been struggling for the year. It's going to struggle, obviously, the remainder of the year since the shelter in place went into place in mid-March. You know, it's already an ending balance year-to-date of half million dollars. So, we're going to have to send an additional subsidy to golf for end of year. So, just putting that on the council's radar that we will be bringing forward a budget amendment for golf for an additional subsidy. That was part of the projection, because that affects the general fund. So, that's, that's baked into our projections and the $3 million that I referenced last Monday and that I just referenced this evening. Take any questions at this point?
Question to Scott. Madam Clerk, do you see any? Because I'm, I've got a different view again for some reason.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Thank you very much. We go then back to our city manager's discussion. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I had several comments, and I'm trimming them. I will say, the governor's executive order extended shelter in place, and that is through May 30th, golf will open in the city of Bloomington May 1st. There are several restrictions on, you know, that apply to social distancing. But Jay Teslaw and his team, they were prepared when we thought it was a part of the first order that allowed it under essential business, but then we found out that it didn't. One thing that I wanted to do, and Alderman Crable actually saved me last meeting since its 2020, don't forget. It's very critical, and I think we actually have a slide. Craig or Scott, can you show the slide, please? We're going to keep pushing this. It's critical for this community, this region, the state. Next, next slide, please. Scott or Craig? And this is one that I do not want to skip over too quickly, but I will read the names very quickly. Effective retirements, you know, since March 20th. At that time right there, council is 300-plus years of service to the city of Bloomington. Joyce McKean, 37 years. Carol Hare, 34 years. Leo Grant, 33. Doug Carey, 29 years. Steve Adcock, 28. Greg Calabag, 26. Tom Ricker, 22. Scott Sprouls, our very own Scott Sprouls, 22 years. Dave Jacob, 21. Denise Balogna, 19. Jennifer Rogers, 19. David Young, 18 years. So, I did not want to skip over their retirements and their service to the community. It's one that they've got a COVID retirement, so we're not going to be able to recognize these folks like we typically would. So, I wanted to take that opportunity right now. We are in week seven of the COVID pandemic, and crews are doing well. This weekend with the heavy rains, we were playing defense. Do not like that position at all to some of the points that were made earlier in the meeting. It's one in the future at a June or a July committee of the whole. We're going to have a presentation to show the community, the infrastructure improvements that are either ongoing or stuff that's slated, you know, upcoming very soon. And I'm going to cut my time short. That's all I've got, Mayor and Council. And I'm sorry, one more thing. When we're talking about the recovery and, and everything that we're dealing with, these presentations, we knew for a couple of weeks, I wanted to bring these forward. We had three great groups that wanted to speak to us and share what's actually occurring. So, for the discussions that are occurring, whether it's a one-off discussion, whether we're talking about this at three-on-ones or a future meeting to talk about this formally, I have got to get the information into everybody's hands so that you know what's occurring in your community. And we're trying to do that. Thanks to Jamie for mentioning our city website also being prepared in the daily update that Deputy City Manager Tyus is providing counsel so that when you take those questions, you at least have some information that you can talk about. This definitely was the next step with the presentation. So, I know it's a little bit long tonight, but I very much appreciate the opportunity to present this to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Thank you very much. I want to thank the staff and the council, because we're clearly at a crossroads, and we, we need to make sure that we exercise strong leadership and do the best job for our community. There are so many, as we've seen, unmet needs. Some things we can help address, some things we can help address, some of our existing monies, like our community development block grant money. But then, there are still certainly other things, and we certainly appreciate all these public-private partnerships, and especially our relationship with our intergovernmental partner, the county. The only other thing that I want to add right now is to say happy birthday eve to our second longest-serving city council member, and that would be Scott Black. And he's not 13, like somebody asked. He's 30.
My driver's license. I'm pretty excited.
It, 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 it would be, if we Googled you, we'd know. So, I, I'm not, so you're, you're, you're older than Taylor Swift. God.
Oh, boy.
Wow. Okay, you got to calm down. Anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
Scott, shake it off. Shake it off.
Oh, pass. I'm 32. I can't do that anymore.
Hey!
Happy birthday, Scott.
Happy birthday, Scott. We're going to go ahead and start, anybody, see, I got a couple of hands. So, I start with council member Bowlin and then council member Carrillo.
I'm ready to fall asleep. I would like to make a motion to adjourn. It's been a long night.
Well, we only had one other. Okay, well, we're going to go, well, and we have, do have a motion. Is there a second to, to the motion to adjourn? Second by Alderwoman Bray. It is debatable, but I would ask us not to debate it. Just yes, no. We only had one other person who was going to speak. But at this point, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, starting obviously with the council member Matthew?
Council member Matthew.
No.
Council member Bowlin.
Yes, please.
Council member Milwauk.
No.
Council member Emig.
No.
Council member Painter.
No.
Council member Carrillo.
No.
Council member Black.
No.
Council member Crable.
No.
Council member Bray.
Yes.
Okay. Well, okay, so motion does not pass. I'm certainly hoping it will after you have had your comments, Jen.
Thank you. First, I want to just say how deeply disappointed I am that so many of my fellow members on the Bloomington City Council are closeted Taylor Swift fans.
Closeted Taylor.
No. Thank yous.
Second, I just want to remind everybody that I've got a community council meeting coming up on May 14th. We will not be doing it at First Christian Church, but rather via Zoom at 6:00 PM. So, please join us by phone or email. I just wanted to thank our nonprofit partners and all the folks that they are working with by extension. And then, thanks to all the folks who shared their experiences and their stories, which I know are sometimes difficult to share during public comment. I think a lot of those speakers contradicted the notion that all needs are already being met. I think they validated the, the idea that there is more for us to do. And so, I would just encourage us after hearing from our trusted nonprofit partners and from the folks at public comment that we reconsider our, our motion to, to talk about direct aid at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Carrillo. And so, oh, Jamie, you had to sneak in there. Jamie.
So, I just wanted to acknowledge that this week would have been the first farmer's market, and that is unfortunately not going to happen the way that we want it to with everybody out on the square and enjoying the hopefully warm weather that we might have this weekend. But this is Illinois, so who knows? But encourage people to participate virtually with the farmer's market, because the farmers need our support as well. We need to keep that food chain and that food supply going as we move forward. So, local farmers are, we're seeing are becoming a more and more important part of making sure that our community is taken care of. And with that, if, I don't, I see one more hand. Okay.
That was Jen. There are no more hands up.
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, motion second, and I'm not going to do a roll call on this one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you, everybody. And those of you who opposed can stay. Bye.
Bye, Donna. Have a good night.